Call the Madger City Council in order today at 6:12. Charles Graham, roll card please.
Counselor Walker?
Present.
Counselor Yoder?
Present.
Counselor Spencer?
Present.
Counselor Solis?
Present.
Counselor Sebold?
Present.
Counselor Holcomb?
Present.
Mayor Lapine?
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Moving into public comments. I know there's a lot of people here to comment on the homeless ordinance. Is there anybody here not here for that? You're here for something other than the homeless ordinance?
Yeah.
And do you have a...did you fill out? Okay. Then, and sir, you also? You have the one? No, okay. So what I'm gonna do is I'm just gonna call the...since there's a number, I have 15 entrants here who want to speak. So if you're on this list, I'll call your name up. Uh, when you come up, please state your name, your address. Do you need an address or just your name? Okay, name and your address. You have three minutes. Please limit yourself to those three minutes because we'll cut you off at that point there because we have a lot of people who want to talk. Please be respectful of everybody's comments and everybody's opinions. We hold everybody to that civil decorum, if you will. First person is Annette Jim. All right. Please sit down and state your name and your address, please.
My name is Annette Jim. Post Office Box 631 Warm Springs, Oregon. I'm a tribal member of the Confederate Tribes of Warm Springs. And I'm here in concern of the homeless people. Um, I wanna know why they wanna have them move seven in the morning and then go back seven in the evening.
Taking comments.
And I just wanna know, you know, why are you picking on the little people? I'm here to support the people, you know. I wanna know what kinda money is being used for them, to help them instead of putting them down. So I'm just here to support, you know, the people here because I come check on them, whip them sometimes if they need it. But I'm here to support, you know, the homeless people over here, so...that's why I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you. Clifford Reynolds?
Uh, my name...hi. My name is Clifford Reynolds. Address is 12 Southwest 4th Street, which is Quality Inn, 159 Southwest Bard Lane, which is Trails West RV Park, 895 Madison Triplex. There is one at 115 Southeast D Street. Anyways, the impact that, um, I guess that I'm seeing is...I've seen most of these people here either...most of the people that are either in here are...have been negatively affected and that's why they're here, or they are the effectors. And I've just noticed that since I've been here. What I go through on a daily basis is four times at my motel, uh, we have to ask people not to come and go through garbages while we have gas, while...and it affects our business negatively. The other issue is I have an RV park where somehow, some way, they either get in...we have a bathroom there that's for our residents. Somehow, some way, we are constantly having, um, houseless people that are using it that we have asked to not use it. And I understand their reasoning is they don't wanna stink, okay? They don't wanna smell. At the same time, me, I have tenants that they need those facilities, um, and they need them to be in a cleanly shape. And it's hard to keep clean when you're cleaning up for a lot of filth and it's a lot of people. I have, um, um, over at the senior center when they are running...because the Madison place is across from the senior center, and when they are running their programs, I get calls about people peeing in the yard or being a nuisance. All I can do is go over there, see what I see, and then report it, call it in. I'm to the point where I stop looking at these people as human beings and start just looking at them as problems. And I think that's where a lot of people are right now. We should...you know, I was hoping this would be after to see what was said or done or part of this ordinance, uh, the camping ordinance that was going to be discussed today, to see what questions were going to be answered and where we stood on this. I'm just hoping that, uh...
Can I have you take over?
The people that are affected see the people that are affecting them and don't just look at them as just a problem, but as, you know, everyone, as a human being. And it's getting tough because it's a lot of work. It's a lot of work to overlook the problem, so, um, that's why I'm here.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you for your comments. I'm gonna go ahead and cut you off at three minutes.
Yeah.
And then, you're welcome to stay for the discussion when we talk about the ordinance, but right now, we're gonna get through the public comments and then move on to our discussion.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Apologize to that. I'm a paramedic, so that's kind of a hazard of the job. Richard Latyby? Thank you, Jennifer.
Hello, Richard Latyby, 674 Northeast Marygold Street, Madras. And I'm not really here to make comments on your ordinance. I understand we have an issue. We've had an issue for years, and we've been addressing it. I don't know if this is the solve-all solution for it, but my concerns are the downtown area. Prior to where the homeless are now, we had people around downtown complaining of merchants complaining constantly that the homeless were camping in front of their stores, behind their stores, leaving their trash. You got an ordinance now that you're proposing, and we've had several through the years. I've been on the council for a lot of years and your mayor. Do we have the staff to enforce this ordinance that's gonna go into effect? I'm not asking for answers now, I'm just bringing things up for you for consideration. You're also gonna have dispersing these folks from 7:00 AM or, you know, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM that they'll be somewhere...have to go somewhere. So they're not just gonna disappear, they're gonna be back to where they were prior to going to Willow Creek. So that means they'll be downtown, uh, they'll be in our parks. I've had several complaints when I was on the council and as mayor that we have homeless people sitting in the parks. It's a public entity, they're allowed to do that. But when you have children playing in the splash park, uh, that's gonna probably upset a lot of parents and community members. And unless public trespassing has been upgraded, they're allowed to be in the public. We are a sanctuary city, so that means that everybody's welcome. So if we had another 100 to 200 people come into our city, how are you gonna handle that? Because you can't simply just move them daily from one place to another. The ordinance, when I read it, said that private property or the property of the homeless will be stored. Who's gonna store that? PD, Sheriff's Department? We don't have the room, as far as I know, at City Hall or the maintenance building to store all the property and keep accountability for it. Being in corrections for 32 years, I know holding accountability for property is a pain. And those who have been involved in that know that also. I know that there's been comments made that the idea is to get these people out of town. When I was Neighborhood Watch Coordinator, that was my statement. I wanted to get the druggies and criminals out of our city. Homeless is not a crime. Homeless is not a criminal. So I think we need to address this, but we need to figure out a proper solution to do it. Uh, I'm not saying this is bad, this is good. I just know that this is gonna bring out a lot of problems, and you're gonna have downtown merchants. We put a lot of money, a lot of money into the Downtown Association, and that money is gonna go down the tubes if we don't do something. Thank you. Six seconds to spare.
Good job. Cheryl Latyby?
Good afternoon. I'm Cheryl Latyby, and I'm at 674 Northeast Marygold, um, Madras, Oregon. And I am against this idea of moving them continually after 7:00 AM. Because again, where are they gonna go? Downtown, sidewalks, the parks, and front of the stores? It's just gonna compound the problem that the gentleman before talked about. The sewage problem, I would recommend, why doesn't the city put a porta potty up there? Okay, it costs money, but it would alleviate a little bit of that problem over there. Oregon and Madras has a lack of resources, and you're only gonna be shuffling these people from one place to another and back and forth. Aurora, Colorado, did the same exact thing that you guys are talking about in February of '22, and they spent $130,000 on abatement, only to continually move and clean up after the same people. At the end of the year, they reported an increase of 369 abatement regu...problems, um, reports in 11 months compared to 80 in 2021. So it didn't only double, it tripled, quadrupled. I'm not really good at math, but I...um, this is obviously a very expensive hamster wheel. There's no easy answer for this at all. Adding theirs, combining it, dividing it, and everything based on the population, Madras, between if you started January 1st, the abatement you're gonna be paying is close to $10,000 by December. Just keep that in mind. Personally, if I had all my stuff on my back and I was down here and moved down there, I'm just gonna park in front of the police department, or I'm not gonna walk all the way back there at the end of the day. Why? If my stuff's down there, I'm gonna go back there. I'm not gonna be sitting in front of somewhere, um, I'm gonna stay at the...you know, it's easier. Have any of you gone to bed hungry? Have any of you had to decide between the power bill, the rent, or paying to feed your children? You know? I don't know if you know it, but every one of us in this room's a heartbeat away from homelessness. And if you don't realize that and you don't wake up to that fact, pride goes before the fall. It really does. Every one of us could be in that situation, and don't kid yourself. The way the government's going is gonna happen real quick, and if we're not ready for it. Someday, these people know how to live and not freeze to death. They may save your life someday. You know, Singapore is one of the cleanest cities in the world, and what do they do with their homeless? They give them a room. They give...they said, okay, you have a room, and I know that this isn't something Madras can do, but they say, here's a bed, here's a house, here's fed, but you're going to work. I'm done. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Jan Forrester? That's okay.
Jan Forrester, 750 Southwest Elka Drive, Madras, and I'm here representing...I'm on the board for the Madras Saturday Market. Thank you, guys, for your generous...the market's going great, by the way. However, we do have one vendor that we had to ban because going, uh, her and her son, who's 50, and the grandson, who's 20, have escalated from verbal abuse of other vendors to our market managers to vending and selling food without proper licensing and without becoming a vendor of ours, to actually threatening me on camera. We had to hire a security guard. Having said that, uh, rules and regulation for public park. 12.05.020 rules and regs. Number one, no person shall bend in the park. Lots more words. In addition to which, if they are warned and don't comply, they can be banned for 180 days. In addition to which, there's an immediate expulsion for menacing, which menacing is defined, according to OR 163.190, as threatening someone. All of these have happened. We have called the police every time. We've had to hire our own security. We've had the chief at one of our Saturday market meetings, and every time, we're told nothing can be done. This isn't working. We have a great market going. I'm out of options. I'm looking to you guys for advice.
Are you aware of this? Is there something you can shed light on? Is this time you can shed light on? This isn't on our agenda, so something briefly you can shed light on, or should we just attach it to another agenda?
We should probably pass it to another agenda. It's bigger than that.
Okay. So what, this isn't a night to have that discussion, so we'll have to put that on the actual agenda item so we can bring...actually put more attention onto it.
So this Saturday, what do we do in light of getting shot?
Chief?
Potentially.
And I don't think this is the time or the place for this lengthy conversation. If you'd like to, we can get together and have a conversation when we're done here about some of the things that we've already put in play.
This evening?
Yes.
All right. I'll wait for you for this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll be back at another meeting to just let you know how it's going.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm gonna mess up this last name. First name, Barbara lives on Eureka Lane. Please come on. Look forward to hearing how you pronounce your last name. Thank you.
Barbara Bodenheimer, 4541 Southwest Eureka Lane, Madras. And I do support the ordinance that you have proposed. It may not be perfect, but it's a start. We've gotta start somewhere. I know it's a bigger problem, but the problem continues to grow. I don't have the answers. I don't think anybody does, but I support what you're trying to do and move us in a direction. I pay my taxes. I don't live rent-free. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Brian Huber? Please state your name and...
My name's Brian Huber. That's it.
Okay.
Thing is, all these homeless people, they have one camp. They're all consolidated in one camp. They live in peace. But you dissolve this camp, then you're gonna have tents all over the city. And they're good people. They are good people. Most of them, anyway. But he...they're good people. A lot of them live in a camp, but he...they're good people. Some of them work. I wish I was working, but... They're friends. Family. I don't understand that. I don't have a family. This is what I got. You dislocated them, he...you guys said they're gonna be all over the place. We're not thieves. They may hurt each other, arguments and whatnot, he... Don't mess with most people. They don't. And, like she said, uh, property values going down because you see tents. Shoot, you kick out of that camp, it could be tents all over the place. Because sidewalks are property, not property value, so... They're gonna camp right there. They're gonna camp all over the place. They live right there, they keep to themselves. They are good. They are native. Every time I see them, woo-woo.
Mr. Huber, thank you for your comments. Johnson Heath? Johnson Heath?
I'm Johnson Heath. Stay at camp.
Anthony Lanson, just here advocating. You wanna speak or you want? Anthony Lanson, running Ministry of Life, Lemons Ministries out here. To speak directly to why he's up here and what we've talked about, um, to...
Can you get closer to the microphone, please?
I apologize, I got a real bad problem with that. To speak to the issues of directly why he's here and what he's to speak about is the homeless situation and what is going to be proposed, and the actual problems and issues we need to deal with in the homeless population. Where he comes from, a completely different world for the majority of us even could even fathom how to live, or, you know, to the upbringing he came from, and in the lifestyle he lives now and how it all came to that. Taking this man out of that situation in a day and then totally changing his environment and expecting him to be able to live in this environment, new environment, we have to have something bigger than just rules and regulations that we're going to only enforce by law. Because that's the only thing we have at the end of this, is it's gonna be enforced by law, which he himself would tell you that he has a very hard time dealing with the law enforcement, and whether jaded on one side or another. And forgive me if I'm not speaking wholly to what you wish, or... But to then take those rules and regulations and only use the law enforcement as the means to...
Tony? Mic again, yes.
That's gonna be the real issue with a lot of the people. We haven't even spoke to the fact of trying to get over those issues in the way the homeless population is jaded towards law enforcement or other services. And the same thing vice versa in return. Forgive me, you just people that love your past. But, you know, coming from the prison system, coming from foster homes, coming from being passed around, it's the mindset and the traumas that have been built in to the people, not only this man sitting here, but others in the community. In a community where we have over, well over 60%, 65% that are of a native population. They're raised in a completely different manner than we were raised. They live in a completely different manner than we live, even up on the reservation itself, in the way they deal with things. And then we're put in a position now where we're gonna take the lifestyle in which they've lived for so long and try to change that in a matter of days and then only enforce it by law. If truly to help the situation, we need volunteers to come out and willing to come down and pull up beside these people and help and assist them out of this, out of the homelessness they're in. And that's truly where a lot of the issues with the homeless, they have. No one comes down. No one goes and sees them, talks with them, sits with them, in the need they have and where they are.
Thank you, Mr. Lanson. Mr. Heath, thank you. Braden Cox? Braden Cox, lives on 10th Street? Sorry if I mispronounced your name.
I don't wish to speak at the moment.
Say again?
I don't wish to speak at the moment. I don't wish to speak at the moment.
You don't want me to speak at the moment?
I don't wanna speak at the moment.
Oh, you don't want to speak at the moment? Okay. Thank you. Life Lemons Ministries. Is that you, Mr. Lanson?
Good evening. All right. My name is Anthony Lanson. I represent Life Lemons Ministries. We've been running for a few years now. I preach in my practice, and we go out and preach Christ in action. And what I mean by that is we go out to the people in need as they are and just provide as we can, as directed through scripture for us to do as brothers and sisters in Christ. Having said that, for the past couple of years now, we've went out every single day. And when I say every day, I mean every single day, without a day missed, directly into the homeless populations. I sit and talk with them on a daily basis, counsel them. We do addiction counseling, addiction specialists. We help with housing, everything from tents to blankets to whatnot. On top of that, uh, we have programs that provide food for the homeless out there. We provide on the holidays. And what I wanna speak to as a ministry is the community support that needs to be behind. Even if you enact these rules, if we don't have the community support, some volunteers, people that are willing to step up, come out and do the things. As a ministry, we've pulled over 143,000 pounds in the last year and a half of trash out of the homeless camps. I don't see anybody else down there. We have many churches in this town, many people that go to these churches. We all know the scriptures. We all know what's being asked of us, and it's to go out and help those. It's not to enact more rules, more regulations that only have the arm of the law as the recourse to take care of this. It's truly going out and understanding the people and seeing why they're homeless. We're always gonna have a set of people that are going to be homeless, period. No matter what is done, whether it's taking away the addictions, providing them with money, homes, anything, they're gonna lend back to homelessness. That's what they know. And it's the position that they've been put in for so long that they don't understand another way of living. We can tell them how to live the way we live or in the style that we live, but unless people are willing to actually go out and assist and show by walking beside them, not in front of them, pointing at them, not behind them, just shoving them, but truly pull up beside them and try to get to the heart of the matter with not only everybody individually, as a group, as a whole, like the big camp that we talk about and we focus on the most here. But, I mean, we have many more camps around town than just the huge one. And it's truly to speak to the issue of the homelessness. We have to speak to the heart of it that's wrong with the people themselves. And that's one thing we've done for quite a few years now as a ministry, to truly try to affect change in the community itself, and I mean the homeless community. We are seen as going out and helping the homeless, but truly the hearts I want are the ones in the city. The ones that profess to know this, that they're supposed to go out and help those in need. The ones that are supposed to feed the sheep, that are go out for the one, leave the 99. And that's truly where I feel that we need to come from the point of, is the volunteer standpoint.
Thank you, Mr. Lanson. I think this is Troy Menson. Troy Menson, 85 Northeast A Street? Huh? No. He's been there twice. Mr. Lanson, you're listening here twice, unless you have somebody else from Life's Lemons? Okay. Karen McCarthy?
Karen McCarthy, Jefferson County, um, Madras.
Karen McCarthy, Jefferson County, Madras business owner, one six six five U.S. Highway twenty-six. I have two comments I noted on my form when I filled out. My first comment is pretty brief and simple. Um, in two thousand and fourteen, I opened my business, Madras Garden Depot, at the location, um, in the spring of two thousand and fourteen. I requested that the city, um, via, I guess, ODOT, do something about the traffic speed there, if we could reduce it somewhat. They did, they performed a test, I guess, or a period where they examined the speeds that were going by, and they reduced it from fifty-five to fifty. Nobody does fifty, nobody does fifty-five. I think the ambient speed there could be classified more in the sixty-two to sixty-eight mile an hour range. I've had a lot of near misses personally, driving to work, trying to get into my business. I've had lots of customers have a few near misses. We actually had somebody get hit right as they tried to enter our gate. We have, I'm sure you're well aware possibly of all the, um, the traffic from the Brightwood area, from all those guys, all the different businesses up there, the manufacturers in the industrial area. So, I don't know, I don't have the perfect solution, but I think something needs to be done about that because it's only getting busier, especially, you know, towards the weekend, it gets insane up there. So that's my first comment. So if somebody wants to contact me, I'd be happy to talk to them and reach out to other businesses up there because I know other people have the same concern. The second concern, um, is of course tonight with, um, I guess it's not a resolution, it's a proposal, I can't, I'm just really nervous. I have been, um, part of an ad hoc group, we're not an organized group, we're not a religious group, we're not anything to do with anything, we're just people that came together two years ago and we provide food and mutual aid, we call ourselves the Hive. Some of you are aware of us, some of whom you don't know us from Adam, but it's okay. I'm just wanting to comment that I think that it's a slightly unformed idea that's being pushed forward. I think a lot needs to be taken into account. I think there's some very excellent examples of providing low-cost housing. I know this was looked into, I believe it was around two thousand and seventeen. I was reading about it, I was excited about it, I was willing to help about it, you know, but nothing ever materialized. And now here we have, you know, we're spending, we're getting all these grants, we're spending millions and da-da-da-da. And we are, it's never gonna, it's never going to eradicate homelessness, houselessness. There's always going to be these folks. Why can't we have a decent, managed, safe sanitary camp? Thank you.
Thank you. Judy Barker?
Hi, I'm Judy Barker, seven three three Southeast Turner Street, Madras. I need to make it really clear that I'm here only to speak for myself, not any group. You have a copy of a note that I, I turned in earlier today, but because this agenda is really long, I wanted to, um, I might need to leave. And I have two corrections to that note and I just want to bring them to your attention. I learned that the city does pay for the dumpsters down at the Sonic site. I thought Madras Sanitary was, um, doing that, so I just want to thank you for that. In addition, I, I made a comment about the Faith-Based Network. They have, Thank, Thank Heavens opened an emergency shelter. It's really only opened though three or four, I can't remember, months during the year. And it's not really addressing the needs of the twenty-five or however many people are living down at the Sonic site. It will really be great when the new emergency shelter moves to that location and the food pantry. But in the meantime, it's really not reasonable for those folks to move every day. It'll just drive them either further away from town or further into town. They really need to be near the stores and services that they need. Some folks who live there have spoken tonight, please, please listen to their voices. So many volunteers are caring for their needs and listening and have been for a long, long time. We would like you to consider the needs that are being met and not try to create a larger problem that already exists. These people are our people. With them being scattered all about the town or the county, that assistance becomes impossible. They depend on the support of each other to get through what their life is. Let's not make it more difficult, please reconsider postponing any decision. If the intent of the council is to force them to move to a more tolerant city, please say that out loud.
Sue Rocky?
Sue Rocky, one six four one South Adams Drive, Madras. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilpeople, for this time. I belong to an organization that had a state meeting, uh, people from all over the state, the first of June, up at Crosskey's Inn, and some of the people I heard wanted to go out for their morning run. They got as far as past Sonic and they turned around and went back to the hotel. They were a little bit taken aback that Madras had such an unsightly mess and they were, they felt unsafe. I can identify with that because I've quit walking that way on the hill. There seems to be a special privileged class of people that live without any responsibility. They don't obey any laws, no laws of sanitation, fire, safety, building codes. They don't pay taxes, they live completely free and irresponsibly. I'm, um, really sorry for them, I wish they could get the help they need to change their lifestyle, but they're not going to get it as long as we keep subsidizing and enabling them to live the way they do. They will never have a desire to change. Someone said tonight that we're all just a click away from being there. My father had a fifth grade education and he raised ten of us children. We sometimes did go hungry, but we were never living on the street. It just takes work and some people have never learned responsibility or work. And I support your ordinance and I thank you for your time.
That's the last of the documents that were presented for those who wanted to speak. I personally want to thank everyone here for maintaining civility and not disrupting our meeting, thank you. I'm going to amend, uh, the agenda. We're going to move number nine on the regular agenda up to number one. So the ordinance of number nine, seven, six will be, uh, number one and the rest will be moved down. What was formerly number two, Oak Street, de-dedication has been removed. And what was formerly number nineteen, the appointment of interim public works director has also been removed from the agenda. Is there any other adjustments or amendments to the agenda?
I do have one, Mayor. I would like to pull from the consent agenda, item three, the city council meeting minutes. There were two errors within those minutes that reflected, uh, voting on two items that we voted on last meeting that were incorrect. Counselor Holcomb and myself were listed as ayes and we were nays. And on another matter, Counselor Siebold was a nay and Counselor Spencer abstained, and they are reflected as ayes on that. So I would like to pull that and have that pushed to our next meeting, give staff time to make the correction.
Thank you. Charlie, you had something?
Yes, I'd also like to move number seventeen, the agreement with Proffman Company for city administrator recruitment to the consent agenda, it's just for signature.
To move number seventeen to the consent agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Any other amendments? Can entertain a motion for the corrected or amended regular agenda?
I move that we accept the regular agenda with the amendments stated by Mayor Lepine, Counselor Solis and HR Administrator Charo.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Thank you. Now can I entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as amended?
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda as amended by Counselor Solis.
Second.
I heard Gabe, oh, excuse me, Counselor Solis first, I'm sorry. Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? You're none, thank you. Okay, going on to public hearings, budget hearing, election to receive state revenues.
Thank you very much. Before you and your packet is the same information that I presented during the budget committee meeting, identifying the state revenue sharing funds and that they will be split between the general fund and the transportation operations fund. I'm happy to review that in any detail that you wish.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I wasn't listening, but I wanted to make sure that you did open the public hearing and declare the time, please.
Ah, okay, let's open it at six fifty-three, thank you for that catch.
Would you like me to give my staff report again?
No, thank you. Does anybody have a comment or questions about the staff report? Are there any public who like to have or have any comments on this budget hearing? Okay, and this time then I'll close the public hearing at six fifty-four.
Mr. Mayor, we do have somebody with their hand up in the audience.
Oh, I'm sorry, who's that?
I believe his name is, is it Johnson?
Someone has a comment on the budget hearing?
I guess it was incorrect, he did have his hand up.
Okay, well then reclose the hearing, still at six fifty-four. No action this time, formal action by resolution. Number two, budget hearing to approve twenty-three, twenty-four budget. At this time, we'll open the hearing at six fifty-five. Crystal, staff report?
Thank you very much. Before you this evening is one of the final pieces, there's only one more, but the council doesn't do it. But this is the final piece for the budget to approve the appropriations for next fiscal year and to approve the tax rate. This is directly from the meetings that we had last meeting, June thirteenth. And I'm happy to review it in any detail that you wish.
Any questions for Crystal on this? None? Any comments from the public on the budget hearing? Hearing done, we'll close the, the hearing at six fifty-five. Again, no action. Number three, city, Madras Housing Capacity Analysis and Comprehensive Plan Update. We'll open this hearing at six fifty-five. Any declaration of conflicts of interest, does any counselor have any actual economic conflict or of interest to disclose? Okay, staff report?
Thank you, Mayor Lepine and Council. Before you this evening are, uh, proposed amendments to the city Madras Comprehensive Plan. Like to give just some brief background on this, this is a project that was funded, um, by grant funding from the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development. We've been working on this for about, uh, well over a year with Eco Northwest. Beth Goodman from Eco Northwest is joining us by Zoom this evening and she'll give you the, the large, uh, the majority of the presentation this evening. Just for the record though, I did want to report, as identified in the, um, staff report, the, both the city council and planning commission have held work sessions on this with our consultant. And on June seventh, the planning commission held a public hearing. They took formal action to make a recommendation, uh, for the city council to approve the proposal. After the staff report this evening, um, from, pardon me, the presentation from Beth Goodman from Eco Northwest, happy to answer any questions before you proceed through your hearing this evening. But ultimately, staff's asking for the council to take, uh, formal action on this evening, so. With that, I'll hand it over to Beth, thank you for joining us this evening.
Certainly, thank you. This has been, uh, a very informative meeting so far. So I'm going to walk through the presentation, we talked about it, um, about a month or a month and a half ago. If I go a little bit too fast, I assume that, uh, Mr. Mayor, you'll stop me and tell me that somebody has questions, if that's okay. Can we go to the next slide? So, a housing capacity analysis looks at growth of all housing types in, uh, Madras over the next twenty years. So it focuses on housing, um, for households with very low income through very high income, so all people in Madras. It answers questions about how much growth is there going to be over the next twenty years? How much buildable land is there, so vacant land that's unconstrained? And we'll talk about that more in a few moments. It answers the question, does Madras have enough buildable residential land to accommodate expected growth? And the answer to that question, just so you're not in suspense, is yes, you do. And then it begins discussions about what policies are needed to meet Madras's housing needs. So these could be changes to regulatory policies to allow and support development of housing, programs or actions to support development of housing that are affordable at all income levels. And we'll look at that in a little bit more detail in a few moments. So the next slide. So this project has resulted in everything that is in the light blue on the left-hand side. You've got a technical report that is the housing capacity analysis with all of the information you see in those bullets. And then you've got revised comprehensive plan, uh, policies and an update to your comprehensive plan, uh, text about housing. So what you'd be doing in adopting this is basically, um, adopting the housing capacity analysis as an appendix or an attachment to your comprehensive plan. And then you can use that as you're making future decisions about land use related to housing. What comes after this project is looking at Madras's housing action plan and looking at policies to support development of housing that's affordable for people to live and work in Madras, as we'll talk about in a few minutes. That might result in some changes to zoning code, it might also look at housing policies and programs. On the next slide, please. Throughout the project, we've, um, engaged our project advisory committee, who helped us vet the information and make sure that it, uh, seemed correct and made sense in the context of Madras, so they've helped us ground truth it essentially. We had an online open house in April where we engaged people, um, who participated in answering some questions about housing need and potential housing actions. We've held a few meetings, the planning commission and the city council. And, uh, as Nick said, the planning commission unanimously recommended adoption of the HCA and the comprehensive plan changes at their hearing earlier this month. Before I go on to the next slide, are there any questions before I get into a little bit of the information? So, next slide. So we'll talk about very, very high-level overview of just a little bit of the data in the housing capacity analysis. On the next slide, we helped, uh, Madras develop their housing action plan back in two thousand and seventeen and eighteen. And at that point, your housing market was, was pretty much frozen, you weren't seeing much development happening. And through that, um, process, the housing action plan, the city identified strategies that it wanted to, um, implement to support housing development. So things like your, um, urban renewal districts that support housing development, um, other types of policies also. And since then, the city also adopted policies to allow middle, uh, middle housing types like duplexes and, and quadplexes and cottage housing and so on and so forth, to be developed, um, in all of your residential areas. So what you're seeing is from two thousand and nineteen forward, you've seen more housing permit, um, activity, been going on, so I would say that Madras has, has done a good job of beginning to unfreeze its housing market. Things that are in the development pipeline that you don't- Things that are in the development pipeline that you don't see in the graph are a new manufactured home park for fifty-nine units, income-restricted senior housing, income-restricted subdivision of forty lots, mostly quadplexes. All of those types of housing, those three things are going to be relatively affordable and are things that are a little bit hard to get, that kind of affordable housing development. You've also seen housing development, or you've seen in the pipeline, proposals for housing development that are more market rate, so things that the, the market typically does, like a hundred and seven units of multifamily housing, mostly up at Yarrow, and twenty-nine units of townhouses. So you're seeing interest in developing a range of housing types. There may be other things that are in the pipeline that Nick hasn't talked to us about in the last couple months. What I would say is Madras has done a very good job of making policy changes that essentially support development of more housing, and not just more housing that's expensive to the highest income earners, but across the income spectrum. It'll take a little bit of time to see that having an effect on the ground, because obviously the housing has to be built first. So on the next slide. So when you ask yourself, what kind of unmet housing need does Madras have? The biggest unmet housing need is around affordability. This goes to the discussion that we were having with your public comment and that you'll be having underneath of issues of homelessness, Nick's right in with that, is need for housing that's affordable for people to live and work in Madras. So about forty percent of your households pay more than they can afford for housing. So they pay thirty percent or more of their gross income for housing costs. When you look at renters, that's above, that's about fifty-three percent of renters are cost burdened, and thirty-six percent of your renters are severely cost burdened, meaning that they are paying fifty percent or more of their income on housing costs. So you see, this is one measure to show how, how, how great the need is for affordable housing in Madras. This isn't a Madras-only problem, this is certainly an Oregon-wide problem, and Central Oregon has this problem in a special spades. The Bend housing market, for instance, is a very expensive housing market, which doesn't surprise you all, I don't think. On the next slide. So when we think about housing that's financially attainable, the way we think about it is in part, how much can a household with different income afford? And what kind of housing is going to be built at that affordability level? So for instance, the median family income in Jefferson County is about seventy-one thousand dollars. A household with income of that can afford, without paying more than thirty percent of their income on a monthly basis, about one thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars in monthly rent. When you look at the average multifamily rent, about twelve fifty, and you add on utilities that ends up being closer to fifteen hundred dollars a month in rent. So, that household that's earning a hundred percent of median family income, they can afford that rent without being cost burdened. When you look at a household that's earning below median family income, at say eighty percent of median family income, that's fifty-seven thousand dollars, they can afford about fourteen hundred and thirty dollars a month in rent. They can't afford that average multifamily rent when you include utilities in that. And then when you look at the median home sales price of about three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars at the end of two thousand twenty-two, what you see is you have to have income of well above average, a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to afford that, depending on, on how much, you know, the household puts down on, on a sales price, et cetera, et cetera. So newly-built, single-family housing is typically affordable only to households with incomes of well above average, so above a hundred and twenty percent of median family income. Newly-built things like apartments, duplexes, sometimes townhouses, that kind of thing, oftentimes not townhouses, though, that's affordable between eighty percent and a hundred and twenty percent. A lot of your workforce has income in that range. Those are built by market-rate developers, so the questions become later in the action plan, what is it that the city can do to better support development of that house, that kind of housing? You've done some things, you can probably do more things if that's what the city chooses to do. And then when you look at housing that's affordable at fifty percent or less of median family income, those households, they can't afford market-rate rent at all. They're looking at nine hundred dollars a month in rent that they can afford. That housing that's below, say sixty percent of median family income, that housing is income-restricted housing, and it's built typically with state and federal funds. So your, your lowest-income households are the ones who would be needing this kind of housing. If we go to the next slide, this slide shows the, the depth of this need. So when we look at this, fully fifty percent of your households, forty-nine percent, what they can afford is income-restricted housing, so housing that is affordable to a household making less than thirty-six thousand dollars. That's hard to get built, there's not enough money in the state to get enough of that built. So that's, that's a particular need in Madras. Madras is not uncommon in that way, most cities have a fair bit of need there. And then when you look at the market-rate, low and moderate-income households, that's about another thirty percent of your households. So only a, a small percentage of your households can afford the, the newly-built larger, more expensive, single-family housing, only about twenty-two percent. Before I go on, are there questions about that? That's a lot of information.
I think you're good to go.
Okay. So then, on the next slide. So what we did in this project is we looked at all of the buildable land inside of the Madras urban growth boundary. On the next slide, this shows all of your vacant, unconstrained, buildable land in residential plan designations and some of your commercial plan designations where housing is allowed outright. When I say unconstrained, I mean we've taken out land that is in steep slopes or in the floodplain, those kind of constraints. And so what you see is that four hundred and fifty acres of your vacant land is in R1, forty-nine is in R2, a hundred and ninety-one is in R3. You have a little bit in your, your downtown commercial and your community commercial, ten acres. And then you've got another hundred and eighty-two acres that are in the urban growth boundary, the UGB, but in county zoning. So in figuring out how much capacity the city has, we focused on capacity for land that's within the city limits, so as we talk about that in a moment. That doesn't count capacity on UGB land, so things in the green zoning. But in the housing needs analysis, we do give an estimate of that. As that land annexes, which zoning district it will annex into is chosen at the time of annexation. It's a little hard to, to guess exactly how much capacity is there. On the next slide, this is the forecast for growth from the state for Madras over the next twenty years, looking at change in about two thousand nine hundred and forty-eight people, and in the end, that'll result in about one thousand one hundred and sixteen new dwelling units. So that's what we're planning for, we're asking the question, does Madras's land-based, its vacant land have enough capacity for a hundred, one thousand one hundred and sixteen new dwelling units? On the next slide, we show that, you know, a, a large percentage of those dwelling units could be single-family detached, and that includes, includes things like mobile and, uh, mobile homes, mobile homes and parks, cottage housing, that kind of thing. And then the rest, we're looking at either being single-family attached, so townhouses, or a duplex, triplex, or quadplex, and some multifamily units. So we're looking at a mix of new housing that's really supported by your current zoning code and what you're allowing throughout the city. On the next slide. What we did is we took the, the vacant buildable land, looked, looked at the kind of housing that is allowed and the densities for which that housing is allowed, and estimated that Madras's land inside its city limits has capacity for about four thousand one hundred and eighty-nine dwelling units. You've got demand for about one thousand one hundred and sixteen, so within your city limits, not even looking at the land in county zoning, you've got more than three thousand units of, we'll call it excess capacity. So you've got enough land, so that, that is certainly not Madras's issue over this next twenty years. Even if you grew two or three times as fast as your forecast, you've got enough land to accommodate that. And if you're growing that fast, I would imagine that some of the land in the county zoning would be annexing into the city. So, going on to the next few slides. What we see is that Madras's future housing need is for more affordable units of all types. And so our emphasis is that's affordable for people to live and work in Madras, for retirees, so on and so forth. The impact of the zoning code changes that were done in two thousand twenty-two, we're gonna take a little time to understand exactly how they're gonna play out. But we think that they are currently leading to development of more attached and multi-unit development, and we think that will continue, especially if the city is supporting development of that kind of housing through whatever we are including in the action plan update, which will come a little bit later than this. We also think that Madras needs to support development of housing that is affordable to households with below income averages, uh, below average incomes, so that's your, your workforce housing, your income-restricted housing. The city is currently doing this, we'll be talking about ways that the city could change current policy or do some other things to support development of that housing more in the future. The next slide shows the recommended changes to the comprehensive plan. So we've removed information from the inventory section about your two thousand seven urbanization report, so your old housing needs analysis. You gotta get all of that information out and replacing it with a reference to the housing capacity analysis report you've got in front of you. We're recommending that the HCA be adopted into the comprehensive plan by reference. And then we revised the comprehensive plan policies to remove the focus from high-income housing to housing affordable at all income levels. So those are the major changes to the comprehensive plan, and then looking at a policy to get the city's existing density policies consistent between the comp plan and the zoning ordinance. And that's all I had. I'm happy to answer questions or handing it back to Nick.
Just an observation I have, I just want to congratulate you on the work, it's very nice, and I do like that you do address also the people with disabilities, because those are, are very different type of constructions and moving around, and also the possibility of the homelessness, you know, because it's a different type also of building, but mostly as you put in there that it's transitory, you know, to then get to the low income or whatever they, their lives get, so thank you for that.
Certainly.
Did anybody have any questions?
I think my one question is, on the comp plan amendments, this is page two hundred and forty-nine of the packet, page one hundred and forty-three of our PDF. There's two sections that reference ordinance number eight-ten, and has just the word date, doesn't have a date of it passing. And then another ordinance regarding the housing, housing capacity analysis being adopted, which will happen tonight, being unfilled in. I'm assuming, moving forward with this, we're approving it, those will both be plugged in, correct?
Yes, so we'll, we'll finalize the documents after you approve them so that they can be included in adopting ordinance for you to consider at a later hearing, or pardon me, a later date.
Perfect, thank you.
No other questions? Okay, is there any public testimony? Please come up, state your name and address, please.
There are Latabee, six seven four Northeast Marigold, Madras. Is water availability included in this? Do we have enough water to, water for our farmers? Do we have enough water to build another thousand homes, another two thousand homes? Is that part of the calculation? That's my question. Do they, is in consideration? Did they even think about it? It's a problem here.
Thank you.
So, Nick, I would imagine that that is addressed in your, your municipal water plans.
That is correct, this, this analysis and this component of the comprehensive plan do not directly address our municipal water supply, but the city's wastewater master plan, which was updated maybe four or five years ago, does consider that. And that, that is the twenty-year facility plan that identifies what is needed to meet our domestic water needs moving forward.
Thank you, Nick.
Good information and a good question. Definitely important for us to consider the infrastructure needs as we move forward, so appreciate that.
Any other public testimony? Staff comments?
Nothing to add unless you guys have additional questions or need some guidance moving forward.
At this time, is there any other deliberation? Entertainer motion?
I move that the City Council to approve the proposed comprehensive plan amendments as presented and direct staff to prepare the necessary adopting ordinance for council consideration at a future date.
Second.
You have a motion and a second and further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you for the presentation, Beth.
Certainly, I think Madras is doing a, a, a good job in moving its housing market forward.
Appreciate that. Next is visitor presentation, proclamation, city and Madras audit for the year ending June twenty, twenty-two.
Thank you very much. So I'm going to introduce Brad Wiganheimer, partner with Senior Leewak and Kathy Wilson. They both helped with the audit this year, and I appreciate them very much for their continued dedication to the city.
Well, thank you very much, appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and bri, uh, speak briefly about the audit. It's obviously a very thick document, and I'm not gonna go into a great deal of detail on it, just wanna give you a few highlights. Of course, the main thing that the city does is engage us to issue an opinion on the financial statements. So we have done that, and our opinion is considered to be an unmodified opinion, which basically says that in our opinion, the financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position as of June thirty, two thousand and twenty-two, and the respective changes in financial position in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. So, you know, it's a clean report from that standpoint. Give you some idea of where the city ended up at the end of the year. On the government-wide finding, there are basically three sets of financial statements. There's the government-wide, there's the governmental fund statements, and the proprietary fund statements. So let's talk quickly about the government-wide statements first. So the city ended the year with total assets and deferred outflows of eighty-nine point eight nine, eighty-nine point nine million dollars. Total liabilities and deferred inflows of just under twenty-eight million, which left a net position of a sixty-one point nine million dollars. Total revenues of the city were nineteen point one million dollars, and the total expenses of the city were twelve point nine million. That resulted in an increase in the net position of the city of six point one million dollars. In looking at the governmental funds, of course, the most important fund of the city is the general fund, that's where many of your core services are provided. The general fund ended the year with a fund balance of four point one million dollars. And all the other governmental funds have a combined fund balance of about seven hundred thousand dollars. So your- So, you're, I'm sorry, of of about, yeah, of about seven hundred thousand dollars, right around that. Your overall change in your fund balances was one point two million dollars. That was largely in the general fund, with the other funds having pluses and minuses. So, you had overall, you know, a positive effect in your government-wide statements. You had a positive effect on your fund balance and your governmental funds. And then, your proprietary funds, you have three separate things that are going on in your proprietary funds. There's the water fund, which ended the year with a net position of seven hundred and twenty-two thousand, which is a small decrease of forty-four thousand dollars from the prior year. Your wastewater system, which ended the year with a net position of twenty point five million, and it had an increase in its net position of two point five million dollars. And then, the third one is your airport. It ended the year with a net position of fifteen million dollars, which has a small decrease of two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars in it. So, overall, pretty positive developments in the financial health of the city. Following the basic statements, there's a whole, long section of footnotes. I want to draw your attention to one of them in particular, and that's the footnote ten regarding long-term obligations. These, of course, are your long-term debt obligations, some other obligations I wanna highlight. The end of the year, the city had governmental debt obligations of seven point three million dollars and business-type debt obligations of eleven point seven million. Those are pretty typical for a Savior size, given everything you have going on. These are all, you know, either bonds or debt issuances that you've done. But what I wanna highlight is the other obligations that you have. So, you have other obligations, one, a small amount for compensated absences of only fifty-seven thousand dollars. But between your governmental and business type, your net pension liability is two point six million dollars. And that represents the city's share of the unfunded Oregon P E R S liability. So, it's a very small portion of it, and that actually was decreased this last year, decreased by about two million dollars. And the thing I wanna point out there is that net pension liability is measured at a point in time. And the point in time, because of timing and everything, is actually measured as of the prior June 30th. So, as of June 30, 21, that's the net pension liability. And I bring that up because the next year, it'll be valued at the date, June 30, 2022. And the investment portfolio for PERS actually, you know, experienced a decrease during that time period. So, this net pension liability will kind of bump up and down, largely related to the fair value of the assets that PERS holds. The total pension liability, that discounted future cash flows that PERS expects to be making, that, you know, changes slightly over time, but not as dramatically as the fair value of the investments. So, that's just one of those things that, you know, I point out that those numbers have a lot of volatility in them. And then, the third item is other post-employment benefits. And the city reports liability there of just over a million dollars. And that largely relates to something called the implicit subsidy, which basically is the projected cost to the city of allowing retirees to continue to obtain health insurance coverage until they reach the age of being Medicare-eligible. The theory behind it is that by, and of course, Oregon law requires you to provide that to them. But because of that, they obtain a benefit because the premiums that they would pay for that coverage would be less than if they went out and got separate insurance that provide that same level of benefits. So, it's kind of like they've got, and they've earned during their working career, a benefit. At the same time, the cost to the city is the fact that you have retirees in your insurance pool because your current premiums may be higher than they would otherwise. Now, you know, both of those items are things that are really beyond the control of the city. You know, they represent a long-term liability of, you know, three point seven million dollars. But you really have very little control over that amount. Following the footnotes, there's a very long section with details of all the different budget actuals and combining statements that fold up into the basic statements. I'm not gonna go through in detail there. Instead, I'm gonna go to the very end of the report that talks, that once again has a report we've issued on the requirements of the Oregon minimum standards. These talk about two things. One, compliance with specific Oregon laws and regulations. And the tests that we perform under those requirements did not detect any instance of non-compliance. And separately, it talks about internal controls. As part of every audit, we come in, obtain an understanding of your internal controls to help us plan the audit and identify areas that may have a higher risk. But also, should we identify anything that we believe is a material weakness or significant deficiency? We will be bringing those forth to the city council in a separate communication. We do not have any of those, so there was no separate communication issued on internal controls. That is our audit in a very brief nutshell. I would entertain any questions anybody has, though.
Anyone have any questions? There are no questions. Thank you for your presentation.
Thanks so much for having us tonight.
Okay, finally, moving on to the regular agenda. The first item is the ordinance number 976, establishing camping regulations and campsite removal policy. For open opportunity for public comment or presenting questions or comments, there's anyone that has a comment that has already spoken at public comments? Please come up if you'd like to speak. Please state your name and your address.
Good evening. My name is Julie Quaid, and I'm at 257 Southeast Barber Road here in Madras. I just wanted to first start out with a land acknowledgement that we are sitting here in Madras on land that was previously occupied by the Warm Springs Wascos Paiutes, the Tenino Band, the Dushuts, the Salilo Y M people that were originally here. Our people were gatherers of foods, roots, berries, hunting elk, deer. That's what we used to do here. And I want to acknowledge that this is the land of our people here. And this, we didn't ask to be moved to a reservation long ago. It was just what happened to us. But our people are still thriving and want to survive in this world now and to get along. And I think the people who spoke previously really expressed that, that they are a community of people. But before that, we're also tribal people, and we always look out for each other. I'm a member of a volunteer group that really tries hard to help our houseless neighbors, as we call them. We don't call them homeless people, but they're our houseless neighbors. They're my people. They're my cousins. They're my uncles. They're my relatives. And I always try to help them as much as I can and really not lay blame, but to really provide support as best I can. But the comment I wanna make today is that is that I would ask you all to reconsider the ordinance that you're offering about the camp that people have occupied and have really created a community of people there. And I would ask that you really consider offering and really considering the amount of energy that you give to listening to what committee should be done, the amount of time you wanna devote to solving problems, the amount of time you wanna devote to considering the housing construction in Madras, and how you might also wanna think about the impact that's being made on people's lives and how you could conduct a more robust solutioning process that really involves the people that are impacted by houselessness and addiction and mental illness and how we can do that as a group together, as members of this community. I've spent my life working since I was fifteen years old. I've paid taxes, state, federal, city, county. I've developed myself a career. I work for the federal government. And I know that there are many people in this town of Madras that have raised families, earning money that used to work at the mill, that used to work at Canita. Maybe they worked at the Indian Health Service now or worked for tribal government over the time. Many of you might have been raised by families who worked at the mill. I had a father that cut trees down. Over the past weekend, I drove out to Mount Jefferson to look for the huckleberries, to see what was there. And what I saw was a stand of trees that was cut down to nothing. And that impacted me and my livelihood and what I wanna do, to pick huckleberries and dig roots and serve my community and feed people. And so, I just ask you to really be more thoughtful about the way that you make decisions that impact people's lives and that I want to be a part of the solution. I want to be able to still volunteer to help my community. And I don't differentiate between tribal people and other people. We serve a lot of people there on Saturdays. Many people are welcome, and not only that, there are many community members who come and contribute. One day, when I was there, a stranger walked up and gave me a hundred dollars. On other days, I'm there helping to volunteer and serve food to people, and they think I'm a houseless neighbor because of my skin that I have. I'm brown-skinned, and I must be houseless too. But I want you to know that I've had a career. I've worked forty years for the Head Start program. I monitor Head Start programs across the country. I've devoted my life to women and children and families. And I've done that my whole life, and I just really wanna be able to contribute here locally with the people that are my neighbors here, not across the country, in New York City and Seattle and Denver and all the. I've been to every state in the country with my work. But I wanna be able to contribute here.
I ask you to please wrap up your comments.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that has not already spoken? And please limit your comments to three minutes.
My name's Cassandra Chapman, 1121 Northwest Willow Parkway Drive. I have been privileged to get to know many of our houseless neighbors over the past few years. I wasn't really prepared to talk today, but I'm just gonna kind of word vomit some stuff. These people are amazing. They're resilient. Some of them are so feisty. They advocate for each other. They're family. They rely on each other in that community. They know each other's triggers. They know who to watch out for, to be there for, whether it be someone might overdose, whether it be a domestic violence victim, whether it be a little child. They know who their neighbors are, and that's extremely important. Some of them have jobs. You know what is required to have a job? Is to show up clean, showered, right? Presentable. To be successful at your job, you need a consistent place to live. You need stability. What stability will these folks have if you ask them, tell them, to move every day? If you ask them to move every day and they don't know who their neighbor's gonna be or where they're gonna stay during the day, where would you like them to go when they can't be at their homes? They need laundry. Why aren't we asking them? Why aren't we stepping up for the needs, the basic needs that they need to be successful? When I was twenty-five, I experienced houselessness. It does not take much to be in their place. I had a job. I was able to sleep in my car. I was able to work. My family stepped up. They took me in. I was able to get back on my feet. Some people don't have that. Some people need the mental health help. They need addiction help. They just need to step up. Doing this is just gonna push them down further. This quote does not, it doesn't fill what you guys are doing. A vibrant, responsive community where you can thrive and grow. How does that comment fit what you are trying to do to this community?
Okay, I'm gonna move on to entertain a motion to read the ordinance by title only.
Mayor, we have a comment online. There's a handup.
Okay. Who's the person online wishing to make a comment?
I'm trying to get this figured out. Is that coming through?
Yeah, what is your name, please?
Tim Segura, a homeowner, but I use Peel Box 219. I just had a couple comments. I'm new here, trying to understand this problem better. Thank you for educating me. Lots of good info on homeless situation. I had a couple comments. It sounded like there was a ministry that goes in there every day. And so, I'd like the city to comment, when you guys discuss this, to comment. Are we supporting them with dollars? Are our tax dollars helping this ministry? Because it sounds like we've got volunteers and a ministry going in there every day. So, that's number one. I'd just like clarification. If the city is providing that many funds to assist. And my second question is, I'm gonna suggest almost a step in your ordinance. I like the idea generally, but I'd like to say maybe there's a good side and a bad side. I'll just throw this out, that there's some homeless people that do a very good job keeping their area tidy. You know, they're well-managed, well-behaved. And maybe they get a certain section of the camp that remains and doesn't have to move each day. And then, there's others that maybe don't qualify for that area, and that they don't fall under your ordinance. I would just suggest maybe a step, but I, I mean, I appreciate the city trying to creatively come up with something, because I think doing nothing is not the answer either. So, again, I'd just like to see the volunteers and ministries aided with our tax dollars and then also perhaps a step towards your ordinance, which would be a split kind of situation. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. She's very comment. Okay, now, I've entertained a motion to read the ordinance by title only.
I move that we read the ordinance by title only. I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Council, can you read the ordinance by title only, please?
Are we gonna discuss this at all?
That's next. Go ahead, council.
Ordinance number 976. In ordinance of City of Madras, establishing camping regulations and a campsite removal policy.
Thank you. At this time, I'd ask the council members if they have any questions or comments.
Yes. First of all, I appreciate the I really appreciate all of you coming out and giving us some ideas, both sides, middle, whatever. I don't care. My main concern is the people that we're affecting. Sometimes they have a choice, sometimes they don't. I don't agree with I mean, I've worked hard my whole life and some people are just lazy, you know? So, I don't wanna enable someone like that. I also think that our new homeless shelter is gonna affect them positively, and we will be able to do some things in there that we wouldn't normally be able to do. I appreciate the lemons and ministry. I think he's right on doing what he needs to do. But honestly, displacing everyone every night, I'm not really I don't know that that would solve anything. And I might ask the PD what they think about this whole ordinance and if they think that that would be something that would And if they think that that would be something that would benefit or adversely affect our community? Sorry to put you on the spot, Tim.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, the comments have already been made from the public about how other cities have tried and take, to take, take on this challenge. And, uh, some cities have been more successful than others. But they have all faced, from what I understand, the same challenges. And that is what to do and how much to provide. And how much reliance on the government or how much does the government want to rely on the taxpayers in order to fund and the level of service? So it's, in my opinion, it's a balance. However, no matter what it is that the city chooses to do or the citizens support, law enforcement will support the ordinances and the laws that are before us. That's our obligation is to be a neutral, unbiased opportunity. There are challenges that have been already been spoken to that I don't think need to be readdressed. Um, but no matter which path, from what I've seen that is taken, the challenges, there are gonna be challenges that won't be abated by it. There'll be challenges that'll be created by it. And so then they have to be addressed when they, they rise themselves up. So, um, councilmen, I don't mean to move around or dance around the subject, but, but that's what we have seen historically, not only just in Oregon, but throughout the nation as peoples try to address, um, this challenge.
Any other councillors that have a comment or a question? Counselor Holcomb?
Um, I have a question. I'm understanding from Counselor Sebel, and he might be able to expand on that, that there's an Oregon homeless law that takes, goes into effect July 1st, that if we don't adopt our own ordinance, that this one takes into effect? Can somebody explain that to me?
Nick, do you have knowledge on that?
Only generally, I would certainly defer to the city attorney. Jeremy, can you advise?
Sure. If I heard the question correctly, uh, it was an inquiry about the law that goes into effect, uh, here momentarily, July 1st specifically. Yeah, so, uh, in short, in your recitals contained within the ordinance, that specific Oregon law is identified, that is ORS 195.530. Uh, in essence, what that law requires is that any city law or code provision uh, that regulates or concerns the acts of sitting, lying, sleeping in or keeping warm or dry outdoors must be reasonable as to time, place and manner. The ordinance in front of you is intended to establish reasonable time, place, manner regulations as it relates to those specific activities on public property.
Thank you, Jeremy. So what I'm understanding is by Oregon law, all, each of the municipalities are being forced to create some sort of a homeless ordinance? And the level of reasonableness is subjective depending on the council and/or public comments? Is that correct?
Uh, yes and no. So theoretically speaking, if we didn't have any laws or regulations on our books that arguably address those particular items or actions, activities, if you will, that I just identified, uh, we wouldn't even have to move forward with this ordinance, arguably. It would still, uh, uh, at least under the law, it still may be advisable to adopt regulations, but they may not be, um, you know, consistent with what has been presented tonight. One of the reasons why we are adopting this, uh, time, place, manner regulation is because we need to ensure that any of those identified acts are regulated in objectively reasonable time, place, manner basis or on an objectively reasonable time, place, manner basis. Technically speaking, there should be no subjectivity at all. Uh, in the sense that objectively speaking, meaning towards a third party, a third party should be able to perceive or interpret those regulations that we ultimately put on the book to be objectively reasonable as to time, place and manner.
Jeremy, I have a question for you. So, um, if we accept this ordinance tonight, um, say, you know, three months, four months down the road, and we see that something's not working properly, we can go back in and amend that, correct?
Absolutely. This is a living document. Uh, and, and this is, uh, a case of first impression for many municipalities. Uh, uh, and so I am completely envisioning and do anticipate that certain municipalities will adopt TPMs, time, place, manner regulations like this, uh, now and later find and throughout the summer or the winter or next, whatever it might be in the future, that modifications are necessary. You always will have that option or opportunity, provided that, that default rule or premise uh, is applied, which is the objectively reasonable regulation.
Okay, thank you for that. And what I'd like to say is I appreciate all of your comments this evening. And I don't think that it's the goal of the council to try to make something difficult for anyone, but we do need to have some type of structure. And I think that as time goes on, that, um, you know, there may need to be some amendments to be able to accommodate people or accommodate it better. Um, right now, there's not a tremendous amount of data that we have. There's some data that we have, but how to deal with a problem, uh, respectively? Um, I think it's important that we have more data so we can make adjustments as we need to.
I just wanna say that I personally am not in favor of the law that moves people from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. That's because I have a downtown business. I have to pick up my trash on a regular basis. That's gone through. I have people sleeping on my sidewalks. I don't, I, I'm very much struggling with this. I, I know that we're trying to help and be accommodating, but also clean up an issue. But moving them every day, I am not in supportive because I do, like I said, I have a downtown business and there's gotta be a better way. But however, I don't believe that everybody should get to stay there all the time and we have yards and yards of trash. So I'm looking for something in a middle ground here.
I would like to add that, um, one of the major, uh, responsibility that, um, the, the city was asking was safety. And, um, in these months and prior, I, police, we have already been swearing people in. We already have a police chief. So we have been pushing towards, you know, the major concern that was told to us was safety. Along with that, that safety came in home with the homelessness, with people, right? That are struggling. Uh, we have to understand that this group is very varied. It's not only people with addiction, drugs and mental health issues. It's people that are displaced because of health and have got displaced because of job and other social. And one thing is to consider, this is a very small city and we have to be so proud that in some months that are coming down, there's a shelter. We had to prove this ordinance because of the law that was coming. But basically, we wouldn't have done anything until the shelter came in. The shelter's gonna, people's gonna be inside the shelter. And there's all this, um, all of you that are helping and the faith-based, the volunteers, et cetera. You're gonna have a place where you will all gather in one place to help them. And then social workers, you know, everything to help. So again, this ordinance, um, does put a spot in this moment, but we need to advance. We need to, um, do something in the moment because of the other ordinance that, the law that's coming from up, and we don't. I guess nobody wants to be a Portland. Nobody wants to be a Seattle. I don't know if many of you have been in there, have to walk around. I stopped going to Portland downtown and other areas because I'm unsafe. I cannot even walk in there. Um, I had to go to Austin, Texas just four months ago. I was terrified in walking some streets there that nobody had told me, don't go there. And those is in Austin, Texas, I mean, in, in, in very areas. So again, we have a beautiful shelter that's being built where everybody's gonna be able to help. And, um, I do, um, we will not be enforcing hand by hand the first day, but it will be in a gradual way with the help of everybody. And as, um, everybody has been saying, we can amend. And obviously, it's a living document and we will be addressing it.
I'd like to start with thanking everybody for coming, um, and presenting your comments. There's a lot of passion in this room for what we're discussing here this evening. You know, I've had family members of my own experience, houselessness for quite some time. Either cousins of mine or my immediate siblings have experienced it. So while I have not myself experienced it, I have relatives who have. And I don't think this is an easy topic at all for anyone. I don't think there's an easy solution. Many of you have said that this evening. There is no solution where everything is perfect. And unfortunately, that's because we live in an imperfect world. I think what several of you have said and what several of the counselors have conveyed is we need to find that middle ground, that spot that works and is beneficial for our community. Because what works here might not work somewhere else, right? Each community is individual. We have our community. It's made up of us, our experiences as individuals. And our experiences may be different from those in Bend, Portland, Primeville, wherever you go. They're gonna be different. And so what we need to do as a community is find that middle ground. At this point, I think that we're kind of down to the wire as far as having something passed. Is it perfect? Absolutely not. This is absolutely not a perfect document. I do not think that it's going to solve all the issues. It'll create some issues. It'll solve some, if, some of the issues and the challenges that are presented. But as counselors have said, it's a living document. It's something that we can adopt and adapt and modify as time goes on. Uh, there's a homeless advisory committee that was created that Mayor Lapine is representative on. And there's opportunity for members of the community to work with not only city council, but this advisory committee to be able to assist in getting this to a point that works for our community. And I think that's what we need to do. I think many of you would probably be interested in that and love the opportunity to work not only with council, but with that advisory committee so that we can get this to a point where it works for the community.
As Counselor Sully's mentioned, I'm the representative on our homeless awareness committee. In fact, I was the one who had a big involvement in putting that committee together. I'm sorry, but we're past public comment on this? So we're past public comment on this? Okay, I'm sorry, I'm still gonna continue. The homeless awareness committee came together. One of the things that we put together was rather than saying where areas people could not camp, we wanted to put together areas where they could camp. So that made, one, areas that was easier for law enforcement to keep tabs on and control if that became an issue. It gave them kind of an area that was assigned and also kept people, uh, protected areas such as schools, parks, where our kids play, and our businesses, where we do our business. We were looking for a balance in that. We did not come up with an actual timeframe on that. That came from the council and our work session. I believe that wasn't from 7:00 to 7:00, but from an hour before sunset to an hour after sunrise. Would that, would that came up with? I myself have experienced homelessness when I worked actually in between jobs, working in the valley. I guess I wouldn't be working if I was between jobs. I had an experience over the weekend that made me think about this where somebody who was, um, interacting with law enforcement in an interview, and a lady approached me in the parking lot and said, "That person has mental health issues, that they shouldn't be arrested." Well, they weren't being arrested, they were being interviewed. And I think the person was in a place in the store where they weren't supposed to be at that time. And I said, "Well, ma'am, I don't know the situation, so I, I don't know if that person should be arrested or not." "Well, clearly, I know that person has mental issues." And it's, "Oh, so you know this person?" "No." "Well, then you don't know if this person has mental issues." "Well, just by looking at him, I can tell this person has mental issues." "I've been a paramedic for over 35 years and by looking at that person, that could be right or could be under the influence or something. It just could be a product of poor choices." I said this. And she said, "He just needs compassion." In my own experience from making poor choices, I've learned there has to be a time where we have to show some form of accountability or responsibility for our choices. But as this lady said, there's also a time for compassion. I think all the city councils trying to look for is the balance in between that. Where is that line? This is not a, a black and white, right or wrong answer to this. Any other comments from the council?
Um, I wanna jump in here. So this is a living document. I think that's important to know, that if we, you know, this is a feedback loop, so we need to see how things work. We're up against a deadline, July 1st. Um, Governor Kotek, um, I, I want everybody to understand that we see all sides. This isn't meant to be heartless. This isn't meant to be cruel. Where as a society do you draw the line, right? Like I lived in Portland for 10 years as a homeowner. And I saw the permanent 10 cities and they did not work. They grew every year. It doesn't work. The path to hell is paved with good intentions. So that's not a viable option. We can't just carve off part of the city and make a homeless tent, you know, homeless tent city. Especially if Bend and Primeville come up with very strict ordinances, we will become the Portland of Central Oregon. We don't wanna do that. So we will have a feedback loop. We will be compassionate. We can great grace periods. We can take a crawl, walk, run approach. But with that said, I move that the city council pass ordinance number 976.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Cheryl, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Holcomb?
Nay.
Counselor Sebel?
Yea.
Counselor Sully's?
Aye.
Counselor Spencer?
Aye.
Counselor Yoder?
Aye.
Counselor Walker? And the ordinance passes.
Thank you. It's time we're gonna take a 10 minute break.
Recording stopped.
14. Sorry, I don't think it took a time when we left. Um, okay, moving on to the next item. Airport fixed base operator service agreement. Derek?
All right, thank you, Mayor. Um, a little bit of background on this. A study by AMCG was recommended originally to split up the FBO and airport management services. This is vital to the success of the airport as it continues to grow. On January 17th, a request for a proposal was created seeking to provide fixed base operator services at the airport. It yielded only one applicant, HODERO. The parties were unable to come to an agreement on terms of the contract. And on July, oh, sorry, on July 1st, 2023, FBO services at the airport would be greatly impacted as the current contract would expire. So we have been working to maintain those FB, FBO services at the airport. Some of these include communicating on the Unicom, assigning rental and crew cars, light janitorial maintenance, moving aircraft, maintaining the airport's fuel cells, testing tanks and inspecting the components, providing on-call fuel service, helping account for fuel cells, greeting aircraft pilots, guests and scheduling special events along with flight, flight training. A lot of these are things you wouldn't necessarily think of when you consider the FBO, but they really do a lot. So staff has also checked with multiple potential temporary providers. These providers did not provide the service or did not want to provide the service. Luckily, Berg Air was willing to stay for another year. And that is what this is, extending their current agreement for the next year. Uh, the agreement has also been amended to receive additional revenue from the North and South World War II hangers through additional rent. Staff recommends approving the extension with Berg Air, so.
I have a question for you, Derek. There was an email that came out earlier and I never called you about it. But, um, I'm just curious to hear your response to that or if you have a comment on that.
Yeah, the most recent email by HODERO. Um, it's pretty false, um, as far as. It's pretty false as far as the amount of money that's being made. What they potentially would have brought to the city was forty-eight thousand, six eighty. That would have been the benefit to the city. This is six thousand in annual savings from the FBO, six thousand seventy-two dollars from the North Hangar rent, twenty-eight thousand and eight would have been for the South Hangar, of which they also wanted twenty thousand credit for improvements that they did before the city has been involved with that hangar. They were going to provide a thousand dollars in fuel truck intake rental. A fuel flowage to commercial operators would have been five thousand dollars. And HODERO would have paid twelve thousand, six hundred for rent and also ten thousand in maintenance. Along with that maintenance, they could have used that for anything they wanted, which was, could have been used for signs or basically anything. So we don't actually know how that would have benefited the airport. One of the other concerns was the fuel as well. They would have been able to set their own prices, and some of them are in place right now to extend business to the future. So they could have came in in the first year and changed prices to whatever they wanted, left after a year, and then we would have been left with what had happened. So that's kind of my response to that.
Okay, thanks for your, thanks for preparing your response. I should let you know ahead of time, but I was, all of a sudden, I'm sitting here and go, "Oh, yeah, I forgot to talk to Derek about that." So thank you, I appreciate it. That was kind of my assumption, but I wanted to hear it from you.
Appreciate that.
I would like to make a comment that the airport, it is a very important piece of growth for our city. And I really see so much growth, especially corporate, you know, that you have been talking about. You have done an extraordinary job in the short term that you have been with us, and you deserve to have the people and the management that will benefit us all. And I really think we should give ourselves that year and again, get a proposal and get other bidders and more, and especially that now that we have, you know, these plans, these ideas that will bring it. It's very important that the FBO that you call to be a great partner with us. It can't be fighting us and undermining. I mean, already, you know, it's not only the money, it's the character and the relationship that we can build. So I do, I would approve this, your, the one-year extension.
Counsel Sebold, I can tell you are edging.
You're like a mind reader, Mayor. I wanted to say that, first of all, I want to thank you, Derek, for all your hard work in this. I had an hour meeting, as you know, with you and Kristi. We discussed all this. I have a lot of confidence in your leadership down in the airport and guiding this process, so thank you. And I absolutely do support this resolution. I think it makes a lot of sense. So unless there's any other questions, I'll just make the resolution. Oh, it looks like Gary's got a question.
I just have a question. I just want to thank Berg Air for offering to help us out and do this for another year. Thank Rob as well. Appreciate you guys, and I've always enjoyed your being up there, so thank you.
I'd like to also say thank you to Berg Air for saving our bacon.
I move to approve the extension of Berg Air LLC to provide FBO services for one year.
I heard Counsel Yoder. Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, Berg Air. Thank you, Derek. Okay. Olive Street deed and dedication, Michelle?
Thank you. You should have received from Kelly yesterday some updated exhibits. The wrong ones were grabbed when we put the deed of dedication in the software. The Olive Street mini storage facility is required as a condition of approval for their site plan application to dedicate the needed right-of-way for the future build-out of Olive Street. So if you have any other questions about that, just fire away.
I'll do a motion for the council to approve the mayor sign, the deed of dedication for public right-of-way, R O W, to include seventeen point five feet of Set Tract A, Block Two, Watts addition for the building out and extension of Oak Street.
Second.
No, we took out Oak Street.
I make a motion for the council to authorize the mayor to sign the deed of dedication for public right-of-way, R O W, for the westerly twelve point five feet of lands described in D-Document 2020 dash forty-seven fifty-seven.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous, thank you. Resolution one-one dash two zero two-three, adopt 2023, 2024 budget. Crystal?
Thank you very much. This is the formal resolution adopting the budget and approving the tax rate.
I make a motion to approve the resolution eleven dash 2023.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous, thank you. Resolution twelve dash 2024, state revenue sharing funds. Crystal?
Mr. Mayor, just for the record, could we get on the record the motion that we would be imposing the tax and categorizing the tax in accordance with ORS two-nine-four-point four-five-six, just for clarification in the record? I want to make sure we get our tax money.
So would you like us to basically read the title of the resolution? Is that what you're looking for?
Yes, please.
Okay. I move that we approve resolution number eleven dash 2023, a resolution adopting the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, making appropriations, imposing the tax, and categorizing the tax in accordance with ORS two-nine-four-point four-five-six. Kristi, is that sufficient?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any other corrections? Okay. Back to resolution twelve twenty-three, state revenue sharing funds.
This is a formal action that receives the state revenue sharing from the state of Oregon as previously identified.
Do we need to do the same thing with this one, Kristi?
If you would, please.
Sure. I move to approve resolution number twelve dash 2023, a resolution of the City of Madras declaring the city's election to receive state revenues.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous, thank you. Resolution thirteen dash 2023, abolishing funds. Crystal?
During the budget process this year, we abolished three funds. ISF Central Services was absorbed into the general fund, as was the Parks Fund and the Community Development Fund. Though none of these funds were originally created by resolution, we are going to identify that and then abolish them by resolution so that it's in the record that these funds are no longer in use.
I'll read it very long. I do the motion to approve resolution thirteen dash 2023, to abolish the Parks Fund, Community Development Fund, and Internal Services Central Services Fund, and identifying where the unexpended or unobligated balance will be transferred when the fund is abolished. Set a review date of the general fund on later than June twenty thirty-three.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous, thank you. Resolution fourteen dash 2023, line of credit and MERC extension.
So the debt authorized for the MRC is actually the city's debt. You are on the hook, as the city, to back the debt for the commercial district in this case. So the same is true of the one point nine million dollars. The fixed rate of three percent is moving to prime minus one percent. And we're establishing a date of June thirtieth, 2024.
Okay, I'll read it also. I move to the council to approve resolution fourteen dash 2023. It's a resolution, it's a resolution of the City of Madras authorizing and approving, A, an extension to a certain line of credit city secured from Bank of the Cascades, now operating as First Interstate Bank, B, an adjustment to the interest rate on the line of credit, and C, certain city representatives to take all necessary actions and sign all necessary documents, certificates, instruments, and/or agreements to effectuate the aforementioned.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous, thank you.
Do we need this with every resolution, or were we only looking for that?
No, just the ones for the budget were the ones I was most particularly interested in.
Now, after she read the whole thing. Thank you for clarifying.
You bet.
Resolution fifteen dash 2023, line of credit, MERC extension.
This is the resolution, the mere resolution for the housing district. The principal amount is only a million dollars as opposed to the one point nine, and it's the same variable interest rate move with a review date of, or maturity date of June thirtieth, 2024.
I move the council approve resolution number fifteen dash two zero two-three.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I think you should have read the whole thing.
Unanimous. That's his proposal.
A lot of cities do.
Thank you, Crystal.
You said.
Okay, moving on to ordinance number nine seventy-seven, amending Madras Municipal Code, Chapter twelve point four-five, to update procedures for adoption and revision of public improvement design and construction standards. Adopting amended and restated public improvement design and construction standards. Is there any one in the public who has any questions or comments? Yes. Would you like to say your name for the record, please? Thank you. I'm going to change a motion to have the ordinance read by title only.
I move that we have the ordinance read by title only.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, council?
Yes, Mayor. Ordinance number nine hundred seventy-seven, in ordinance, amending Madras Municipal Code, Chapter twelve point four-five, to update procedures for adoption and revision of public improvement design, excuse me, and construction standards, adopting amended and restated public improvement design and construction standards.
Thank you, Jeremy. Council, any questions or comments from the council?
I do have questions on this one. I'm trying to understand the way I read this. This allows the city administrator to make changes without running it by city council for development? Is that correct?
Yes, so this is intended so that the administrator can make the technical changes?
Can you define a technical change?
Well, I'm not necessarily an engineer, but I'll do my best. Okay. So if, for example, we had a standard on manholes for sewer, and we wanted to add a requirement, there'd be a concrete ring around the lid for the manhole cover. Technical change. Okay? Let me give you a, conversely, let me give you an example of a policy-based change that would be adopted by resolution. This ordinance establishes also the ability to change the standards by resolution. So in July, the city council will be presented a proposal where we will establish private street standards. We don't have those today. In my mind, that's a very big policy decision, so that would not be adopted by the administrator. We would, we would take a resolution to the city council, have you consider that resolution? Does that help you?
Okay, so fair clarification, we're not changing policy, we're just changing the backend stuff, the engineering side of it that makes it safer, more functional, but we're not saying that the city administrator can require sidewalks or trees or anything without it running by council.
Yes, that would be a policy change, so that would be something that would need to be passed by a resolution.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions from the council? Hearing none, entertain a motion to approve and adopt the ordinance.
I move that the city council approve ordinance number nine seventy-seven.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Charles, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Counsel Walker?
Aye.
Counsel Yoder?
Aye.
Counsel Spencer?
Aye.
Counsel Sullyes?
Aye.
Counsel Sebold?
Aye.
Counsel Holcomb?
Aye.
Ordinance number nine seventy-seven passes unanimously.
Thank you. Ordinance number nine seven eight, amending Madras Municipal Code, Chapter one point zero five, and adding Chapter two point three zero to establish uniform code enforcement procedures. It's time, is there any public who wish to have any questions or comments? Hearing none, entertain a motion to read the ordinance by title only.
I move that we read the ordinance by title only.
A second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, council?
Yes, Mayor. Ordinance number nine hundred seventy-eight, in ordinance, amending Madras Municipal Code, Chapter one point zero five, and adding Chapter two point three zero to establish uniform code enforcement procedures.
Thank you, Jeremy. Any council members have a question or comment? Hearing, entertain a motion?
I move that the city council approve ordinance number nine seven eight.
Second.
Heard Counsel Yoder. He was louder. Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, wait. City, we need a roll call vote, please.
Counsel Walker? Counsel Yoder?
Aye.
Counsel Spencer?
Aye.
Counsel Sullyes?
Aye.
Counsel Sebold?
Aye.
Counsel Holcomb?
Aye.
Ordinance number nine seven eight passes unanimously.
Thank you, Charles. Last ordinance, number nine seven nine, amending Madras Municipal Code, Chapter eight point one five, updating nuisance and derelict building provisions and procedures. It's time, is there any public that has any questions or comments? Hearing none, entertain a motion to read the ordinance by title only.
I move that we read the ordinance by title only.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Council?
Yes, Mayor. Ordinance number nine hundred seventy-nine, in ordinance, amending Madras Municipal Code, Chapter eight point one five, updating nuisance and derelict building provisions and procedures.
Thank you, Jeremy. Any of the council members have any questions or comments?
So I do have one question, simply because I did not get a chance to fully read this particular one. Does this in any way reference the increase of the percentage fee that we approved last council meeting?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Is this designed to make it easier to make enforcement decisions, it sounds like, and to kind of increase enforcement as the overall arc of the purpose of this? Is that fair or not fair to say?
I would say generally speaking, this is really kind of a general update. There was some subjective terms in the current nuisance abatement ordinance with regard to the derelict buildings, and city attorney Cross Tech advised that we clean that up so it's more clear and objective so that we aren't making subjective determinations on violations and thereby ease the adjudication process.
That makes sense. Was there common situations we kept running into that there was something, so this will allow us to enforce it? Or it sounds like it was just general housekeeping for kind of theoretical scenarios?
It's general housekeeping. I'm going to maybe, I know Michelle Quinn worked on this quite a bit. I think there were some changes to the tall grass standards, so that's just not, I believe we made the change, the, some changes to that, so it's a little easier to enforce on that regard. But they're really, from a big picture policy perspective, there isn't a there isn't a, a new circumstance, it's now a nuisance that wasn't before, and vice versa.
Thank you.
I move, can I make a motion?
Go ahead.
To move the city council approve ordinance number 979.
Second. Have a motion and a second, all in favor? Wait, 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 wait. City, roll call vote, please.
Counselor Walker?
Aye.
Counselor Yoder?
Aye.
Counselor Spencer?
Aye.
Counselor Solis?
Aye.
Counselor Sebold?
Aye.
Counselor Holcomb?
Aye.
Ordinance number 979 passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I get, who gave the second on that, just for helping Kelly with her minutes?
Counselor Walker, you have a second.
Thank you.
Number 13, audit for year ending June 2022.
It's my privilege to present to you the clean audit for the fiscal year ending June 22. So, thank you very much for your attention this evening. And the formal approval of that is at the request of council, actually.
I move to approve the 2022-2023 audit, or is it the 2122?
Good memory, 2122.
Okay, I move to approve the 2122 audit as presented, second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, city vouchers, May 2023.
I need to recuse myself, as I may have sold goods or provided services to the city.
Thank you, Counselor Walker.
If there's any questions regarding the vouchers for May 2023, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions?
I just want to thank Crystal, I did have a question on it, and I emailed her, and she gave me a really good response, so I appreciate that. It shows that staff are looking at these and keeping in line with policies and procedures that are in place. So, appreciate you and what your staff do.
I move the council approve May 2023 city vouchers as submitted.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm getting loopy, sorry. Unanimous, okay, number 15, year-to-date financial update, 20, uh, May 2023.
We can go into as much detail of this as you would like, but what it looks like to me is that your funds are in a good position going forward into next year. Many of them are likely to be ahead of where we planned for them to be for your beginning fund balance, so that's good. Also, property taxes are increasing, that's good, especially for your police department, and to support your parks, which got moved into the general fund. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
No, sir, it's just for information.
Just for information, okay.
Yes, sir.
I was getting on a roll. American Pipeline Solutions procurement, Michelle.
Thank you, so I'm back with the ice pigging. So, after you guys approved it at the last council, one of the things that we need for our CBDG grant is they need a legal opinion from our legal counsel. And after speaking with Jeremy, in order to do that, it takes a little bit of time. They have to do a resolution and, and bring it back to council. And we don't have that type of time. So, legal counsel advised that instead, we just do a regular three-quote process. So, that's what we went through, and contacted other companies to see if they could provide that service. And they couldn't. So I'm back just for a second approval, unless you have questions.
So, I see in your staff report, it mentions at the end recommending that council approve the additional 35,000. This would not necessarily be an additional, correct?
No, no.
This is just reaffirming what we approved in our last meeting?
Yes, yep, absolutely, I just need you to reapprove it on three quotes instead of a sole source.
And, and ice pigging is 10 times more effective than non-ice pigging, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, now that we've established that, I move the council approve the service contract with American Pipeline Solutions for the water distribution land replacement project in the amount of 35,301 dollars, not to exceed the total project amount of 40,000.
Second.
Ooh, I'm gonna give that to Counselor Spencer. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. All right, position profile for city administrator recruitment. Charles?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Okay, during the break, I brought you hot off the press, the most fresh edits from Prothman. And we do also have Steve Worthington online to help answer any questions as well. Yesterday, we met in our work session and discussed some of the edits that council would like to see. You do see, just, just for the record, we, we do have on the very front, that is, the, it is showing the step, or the grade 36, that is not to determine that that is where we are landing right now. That's just for the sake of the, that is just for the sake of the brochure. But in addition to this profile, Prothman has also delivered the draft of the brochure for you. So, you have a copy of the brochure and a copy of the position profile which you had before. And the edits and suggestions that you were looking for are incorporated in that. And I know you have not had a chance to look at that, if you'd like to take a few moments to look through those. Very good. I know you'd also like to have, council would also like to have a discussion about the salary. I thought you might want to do those separately. I do have some additional information about the salary analysis. You can let me know which one you'd like to discuss first.
I'll toe ahead and stick a stab at this. First of all, thank you for going through it and revising it. I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
On why apply in the second paragraph? I, I don't know what the standard is. I know in real estate, we cannot advertise with the word "family", because it discriminates against people who do not have families or don't fall within that structure. So I didn't know if there's an issue with call, "family-friendly community", so it was just a comment. And then down in the community, I think you guys did a great job of elaborating on our area. I would suggest that you add the Central Oregon Trail Alliance to our list of amenities.
The Central Oregon Trail Alliance?
Yes. That was it, I think it's way, much improvement from where we were, so thank you.
Very good. Steve, would you like to speak at all to the family-friendly community? I know that from, I guess from a perspective in this context, family-friendly community, it can be taken in a lot of, in a different, I guess in this perspective, family can be, it can be used even singular technically, because a family can be two people, it can be children, it can be, you know, you can be, you can use it in a lot of different contexts. Families are defined in a number of ways. So, I suppose it is somewhat in the eye of the beholder, I suppose, or the reader? I would ask the council, that's something I would ask the council to decide.
We can certainly, and if council would like, I can speak to that, that's up to you.
Please.
Thank you. I'm Steve Worthington, and the senior consultant for the Prothman Company, who we've hired to do the recruitment for your next city administrator. With regards to the family-friendly statement, it is thought to be a description of the community, not necessarily who you're looking for. And I leave it to you if that's an accurate description or not, we can certainly remove it. It's easy enough to do. But, so it isn't necessarily a requirement of the next person coming in, so much as a way to describe the community that you serve.
I would like the family friend to stay there, because that's what young, it does describe the, our city.
I agree with that. Any other comments? Okay.
I didn't see anything about farming. Am I missing it, or are we mentioning in here that we're a farming community?
There was something in there about the area talking about agriculture and the economy.
It's in the, I think it is in our, in our brochure. And under community.
So they're really two separate documents, they're not one in the same. It's not like they would see all of this together.
Right, they are two separate documents. So we talked briefly about agriculture in, it's highlighted in the, under the community. Let's see, where is it, where is it? Yep. Talked in the first, first sentence, 58?
Yes, 58,000 acres of irrigated farmland, right? And, and that is the piece with the pictures that we use as, as a marketing piece. It contains the same job characteristics and such, but this is the outreach piece we use. We email that likely to several thousand people, and we do traditional hard copy mail as well. I was gonna see snail mail, but I was trying not to. Anyhow, for roughly, there'll be approximately 800 to 1,000 hard copy maintenance of that as well.
So I'm gonna switch over to the ideal candidate education experience section. A couple of things, I know that we settled on a bachelor's degree requirement and six years of experience. The master's preferred, do we, or should we put any sort of language in there that substitutes some of the years of experience in place of that master's? So if you come with a master's and four or five years of experience, we drop the years of experience requirement? I know that's common practice, so.
It's certainly an option the council can consider, I mean, obviously. This is the, the marketing side of it. Nonetheless, so we could do that. I would say the standards that you've articulated there with six years and a bachelor's degree are fairly common for a city administrator as a, as a baseline standard. There are a few instances where you have a very senior, senior city administrator, city manager type, who has 25 years or so in, and may not have a master's, but in these days, that is extremely rare. Or, excuse me, not a master's, may not have a bachelor's degree, and, but multiple years, that's quite rare at this point.
So it's not necessarily something you would professionally recommend we put in there language-wise, but just something more that Prothman is kind of looking at in the applicant process? Okay, thank you. The other part was the selected candidate must have demonstrated senior leadership experience. Correct me if I'm wrong, councilors, but did we want to move that down to the preferred section? I thought that in our conversation, in our work session yesterday? We had talked about moving that, not necessarily making it a requirement, but moving it down to, we prefer somebody who has that demonstrated senior leadership experience.
And my recollection from the notes that we saw was, yes, you'd had it as preferred, not as a requirement. I think we missed that in the edits, sorry about that.
Not a problem.
We'll make that change, and with that, and whatever other changes you'd like, we'd, we'd be able to move forward.
I do appreciate the technical skills that were added in there, especially those relating to our various departments, so that somebody comes in with prior knowledge of Oregon local government finances and accounting, and economic development strategies, et cetera. I do believe we also mentioned risk management, oh, there it is, risk management in there. Should have read a little bit further down.
Yeah, I'm, I'm feeling good about this, I appreciate all the updates. I think this is looking pretty sharp in capturing what the council feedback was, so nice work.
Very good.
So I think that just, as far as for me, that just brings us down to the salary discussion. Don't know how everyone else did.
Fabulous. Okay, so I would like to start, so we talked with our salary consultant yesterday. He is not joining us tonight, he's actually had a medical procedure that he's been attending to all day. And so what I did ask him to do is, I asked him to combine some of the information that we had, or that I had provided yesterday, on the cities that I had some data, and plug that into the information that he had already compiled for the salary survey he had done for Kalamath Falls. He did not have a lot of, it was a short amount of time to turn it around in 24 hours with the medical procedure that he had scheduled. And, but he was able to, he was able to go ahead and combine that into the competitive analysis for the city. And so if you look at the one that says competitive analysis for the city of Madras, what I would like to try to show you is where we are sitting in our range as far as a competitive level salary. As far as competitive level on the scale for median, average, or an overall competitive salary. If you take that and compare it to our salary schedule, which is this larger-looking, larger-looking spreadsheet, on the left-hand side, what I have shown you is where our directors are sitting in their salary grade range, and where the city administrator had landed in the salary survey at a 36th level. Not saying that that's where they would need to stay, but in comparison to where our, to where our direct, department directors are, that's where they would be. When we look at the current salary competitive analysis that the, that he had done, if we look at a competitive median salary, say the starting salary in a median at $67.76, just at a median competitive level, that puts us right at about the third, I mean, we're at the step one of a 36th grade. And that, honestly, if we're, if we're trying to be at a competitive rate, we, we do have several other cities that are going to be hiring a city manager at, during this time. We have, I was, while I was doing this research, I noticed we have, for example, John Day. They're going out a second time because, for their city manager, because primarily they, they did not have their salary range high enough. It, it's a very, it's a very hard time to hire a city manager right now. On the list of competitive analysis, we have Hood River, Ontario, Prineville, Scappus, Silverton, Lincoln City, Junction City. And those are all, and you, Matilla, those are all cities that are in our population range. I began, so, Counselor Solis, you asked to start comparing some of the budget ranges along with the number of staff that we had. And I apologize for not being able to, in the short amount of time that we had to turn around some of the information. If you look at the information on the, it's the information sheet that I provided you yesterday, it does look rather incomplete, but if you pull up the- it does look rather incomplete, but if you pull up the sheet that I gave you yesterday, on the right side of Hood River, you will see it says forty-three point one million. And then a little bit farther, it says seventy-two, seventy-two point eight FTEs. That was one of the data points that I had started plugging in as a starting point. And when their, where their budget may be close to ours, they are dealing with a staff that's twice as ours, twice the number of staff that we have. And what I started to find is that the number of staff for many of these cities is twice the amount of staff that we have. And so we, we, we are having a hard time, I'm having a hard time comparing apples to apples when it comes to staffing. And that points to a different issue that we have. So I think that we, I think that we're getting really into too many, comparing too many data points that really take us away from comparing apples to apples. Many of these cities, when we look at these salary ranges that I did provide you, these are first and second year, eighty percent of these are first and second year city managers that have just begun their careers. And if we look at these, they are, they, they look like they are in the lower range of their salary schedules. But like I said, that's because they are newer, newer city managers. But if we want to try to compete in trying to find a competitive level manager, we're going to need to try to stay in that competitive level. Yesterday, you were comparing our city administrator with the county administrator and some of the differences in how that county administrator works. When you compare how he works in his overall atmosphere and overall job duties compared to how our city administrator works is a little bit different in that the county has three county commissioners that are paid full-time staff that, in addition to that, have a full-time city attorney that is on staff all day long. And those are four professionals that work inside the office with him constantly. Our city administrator does not have that additional four full-time professionals in the office working with the city administrator all day long. Those are skill sets that are absent in the office along with that city administrator. So the city administrator is required to have that additional skill set with them onboard all day long. We are, we have seven counselors that are volunteers and we call, we have to provide and are responsible, that city administrator is responsible for being able to provide all of that support on call when it is needed to our city counselors and seven of you when it is needed. Instead of having seven of you in comparison, if seven of you were paid on staff doing all of that support work, providing it to the city administrator, I would absolutely support a lower salary range. But that's not how, that is not the kind of support that that city administrator is being provided. Whereas the county administrator is being, is or should be being provided that additional support along with having a full-time city attorney on staff in the office. So when, when we look at comparing some of the different job duties and level of responsibility, some of those, it is a little bit difficult to compare apples to apples when the specific job duties on a daily basis are a little bit different.
So thank you for all that. Appreciate the information. And I'll try and be short and concise with this. I'm disappointed with the data that our salary consultant provided. I don't think that's what I asked him for. I can totally understand and respect having a medical procedure. I think it would have been better if he had informed council of that yesterday when we had asked if it was even possible for him to provide the data. So that's unfortunate. You mentioned comparing apples to apples with the county and yes, I can totally agree. Different levels of government, different organizational structures. But that, that's why the request for the data points. That's why bring us those other cities that are around us. Even looking at Prineville's, their city manager tops at a hundred and fifty-two thousand. And that's a top. And that's our next door neighbor. So if you're looking in central Oregon for a competition, it's right there. So I'm disappointed in that. I think that ultimately we as city council as we move forward need to actually have this data brought to us because we're the ones that determine the compensation levels per the city charter. I would even maybe propose that it might be time that we even look at an RFP for a salary consultant and maybe see what else is out there. I think that that would be wise of us. I've said before, I think it's wise of us to regularly go out for RFPs on everything. Not just always go with what we've had in the past. That being said, I do see the levels where other department directors are at as far as the salary schedule goes. And the police chief being at grade thirty-two. And so I don't think that we can necessarily go as low as I personally think the data would show we would need to be. But because we need to have them be able to manage their staff and how can you manage staff if they're making more than you? That you just can't, I would say no to any job offer that came to me and my staff were making more than me. I think it's unfortunate, but it is what it is. And so I would probably look at thirty-five or thirty-six. I don't think I would support thirty-seven.
All right, let me jump in here. I agree with Councilor Solis as far as perhaps doing an RFP for a new salary consultants. I agree that we need maximize transparency and have this data earlier so that we can make good informed decisions. Let me throw something out there as a possibility, maybe a happy compromise. It's brought to my attention that one common methodology is that understanding the city manager should be the most highly compensated person in the organization. There's a typical standard that they make at least fifteen percent higher than their next subordinate. If you look at our current situation, who that is and do the math, it puts the, the step at about thirty-five. So I would propose a thirty-five. It seemed, it does seem a little more in line with Prineville. So that's where I'm at. Step thirty-five, I think it's a good pay and we want them to fall in love with Madras and come and guide us to prosperity.
I would like to add to that, that I would agree with, with the thirty-five. But I do want to mention that depending of the, the business or, and what you are, sometimes you have people that you pay much more than the administrator because of the skills or because of, of risk, et cetera. So I, the vast majority is what you said, Counselor Seawold, but there are other places that they don't earn the most.
I'm fine with thirty-four or thirty-five. I'd also point out that we have dropped our master's requirement, which could have been the justification for putting it at thirty-six, thirty-seven. So thirty-five, thirty-six might make more sense since we've dropped that requirement. We've also lowered the years of experience required. So lowering those items, I think also kind of justifies us moving it down.
I would be okay with thirty-five or thirty-six and take the direction of Prothman on this because we know that it's a competitive market. So whatever they think is best, I'd go with thirty-five or thirty-six.
And, and we risk, if we have to do this over again, what's it gonna cost, you know? Might as well make it somewhat attractive and, and get someone that we want. I've had to hire several people recently and I'm not paying them what I paid them a couple of years ago. So we gotta step it up or not get someone.
I think we run that risk regardless. I've had conversations and it sounds like even there's instances where an applicant comes in and go through the interview and then in negotiating and you offer them the top step and they still say no. And at that point, you can't do anything about it. And that's the case with any hiring, right? You run the risk regardless.
I would like to add to that, that, oh, sorry. That our budget is very limited and we can't continue increasing or even, we really are not in a good spot. And we have to make changes that will be benefit to us. And I think that when at Protham, you know, goes through, we can find candidates and we just have to enchant them with our engagement and how great we are and other things. When I remember I came here to, when I was hired, I didn't get the best salary. I came because I liked the place, I liked the outdoors, I liked the people, I liked the city. And I sacrificed a lot of ten thousand, a lot of those to be here. And so I think there are other things that we can try.
I would say if I, if I'm baselining, it sounds like five of us had the thirty-five step in our range. So just trying to coalesce everybody, I think thirty-five is probably the strongest consensus out of the council.
I would agree with that. And Prothman, what is your opinion on this? Steve?
Thank you, Council. Appreciate the opportunity to comment. So certainly salary plays a significant factor in being competitive and attracting quality candidates. My sense is range thirty-five where it tops out is a competitive top end. There, if I may, there's a couple of other things about your salary schedule you may want to keep in mind. A six, a fifteen-step salary schedule is a little, little longer than many. It shows good planning and good longevity objectives. That's, that's very, that's excellent. So sometimes when you're comparing, you're looking at the length of the number of steps in the salary schedules kind of comes into play as well. It is not uncommon for a new candidate to come in and ask for the top step, but it's negotiation. And you give me your parameters and we work within the parameters that I get from you. Having, I don't expect, I would be surprised to find that we have a candidate that will be ultimately getting the top step. But knowing that there's the opportunity for that money in the years to come is often enough motivator. Not necessarily what the starting wage is, but if I do a good job, if things go well, I can potentially get to that number. And that becomes a good inducement in itself. So short story is range, the range you speak of is, I think, a competitive range. We have some other, other positions nearby that are slightly below that, but not significantly below it. And it tells me that it's a, a competitive rate in the region.
Are we ready for a motion? I, I would actually like to ask Christie's opinion on this as our interim city administrator. Things that you've seen in different cities, kind of maybe what you would recommend or advise council to think about as we make a decision on this?
Certainly. So one of the prior cities where I've served as a pro temp manager, we went through the hiring process for the new manager and we weren't able to find any candidates that the council felt comfortable moving forward in the process that had prior city management experience. And so they essentially ended up offering a position to a new manager who had never served in that role before and actually had only served as a department director for one year. And in order to get that candidate to the city, they had to offer one thirty-five, a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars a year to get them to come to work for the city. It's been a very successful relationship since that time. And, and certainly, you know, where you start, you can make that part of your negotiation process. Say that the candidate lands in a spot where they, they really want a slightly higher pay scale. That happened to me personally. You, you make, you can make an offer and then say, okay, at your six-month mark, we're gonna bring you up to that level as long as you're meeting, you know, X, X, and X. And so that can also be part of your negotiation strategy. I think that the discussion you have had tonight is a good one. I think that you could land on range thirty-five, thirty-six, or thirty-seven and draw a competitive talent pool to Madras. I don't think that selecting one over the other is gonna really make a difference. I think that they're close enough that you're, you would be bringing strong candidates. If they're interested in the community, they're gonna come with any of those ranges. And so if you feel most comfortable with thirty-five, certainly go with that number. If you wanna go with a higher number to give you some additional latitude, that's certainly within your purview as well. Is there anything else, Counselors Solis, that you had in mind that you're looking for a discussion on? Does that kind of cover it?
Yeah, appreciate that.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion on this or?
Yeah, just, excuse me, in the negotiating, you could always offer them, go from step one in thirty-five to step three or whatever. So I think there's a good enough range in there depending on experience that, that we can move on. I feel good about even the thirty-five, so.
Okay. Anybody entertain a motion?
Hopefully I'm doing the right one. Did the council approve and execute the agreement as it is with the Prothman company to conduct the city administrator recruitment?
But you have to add that the scale is thirty-five.
Wait, wait.
That one was already approved under the consent agenda.
Okay, I was actually just kidding. I was testing you and you all passed. Congratulations. We have the best leadership in the entire central Oregon. All right. I move that the council approve the knowledge, skills, abilities, and qualifications presented for the city administrator recruitment position profile with all amendments listed, including step thirty-five and the changes to the language as previously discussed in this discussion.
Can we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? unanimous, thank you. Finally, Tim, we get to move to the confirm and appoint chief of police, Charo. Should we move this to the next agenda? Should we move this to the next agenda? I don't know.
Could.
I'm gonna give Charo a heart attack. Go ahead, Charo.
Thank you, thank you. Does this need very much explanation? So I am bringing to you Timothy Plummer for the, for council to approve and the mayor to appoint as our police chief tonight.
Hey, don't get excited, we still have to approve. I take it that means the psych and all that came through, okay? You're not wanted anywhere?
Yes, yes. Yes, he has come through, okay? And we do have scheduled on Friday at noon in chambers here, we will have his swear-in ceremony. There will be light refreshments after, it's a, it's at noon, so we'll have, we will have refreshments. It'll be a little bit more than just cupcakes. I plan on having like little sandwiches and stuff because a lot of people will be taking their lunch hour during that time. So there will be a little bit of food.
Thank you.
So. And I invited everybody.
Okay, so can I entertain a motion?
I make a motion that council confirm and mayor appoint Timothy Plummer as the Madras PD Police Chief effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing done, welcome, Tim. Now moving on to the last part of tonight, department reports, and I'm gonna start with Tim.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll be brief. We have some exciting news. Hopefully by Friday, we'll have two more people through our background process, one of which will be a lateral, the other one will be new. And if we're efficient enough, we may get the new one in the November class for DPSST. So that'll put three of them in the same class, a good cohort for them to be able to build relationships and a working team. But having a lateral means that we'll probably only have them in the field training program for about a month and then they'll be pushing their own patrol car around solo. So thank you for your support in that, in that effort. The other thing is, is our RMS, new Flex dispatch has been cut over and we've been operating on it now for about a week and a half. Like all new dispatch center software familiarization, probably most of the errors that we're encountering are human errors on our end because we're just not that familiar with the program. But in addition to that, I'm getting nothing but positive feedback from the patrol members on using it. It's access to report writing. In addition, the county has been coming down to our office for us to be able to help them through their cut over. They went to the They went to the same system, they just didn't have the opportunity to do the training. And we have training, I think, with them next week. I think Frontier's going to come over for three days, so we're going to join them in that as well. So that was a big step forward. It's a huge project to cut over to a new dispatch CAD system which interfaces with the report writing system, which will now also interface with our e-citations, our e-crash forms, and our on cue evidence collection process that we're vetting out now through vendors as well. So there you go. It's been a great week. Thank you.
Thank you. You didn't mention that we now have a new police chief. That's some pretty good news. Finest, Crystal?
Nothing to report, but thank you.
We got the budget done. That's something to report. Good job. Good job to you, good job to your staff, good job to all the department directors that helped with that. Absolutely. Community Development, Nick?
Nothing further to report.
Public Works, Michelle?
Okay, so just a few things. One thing, I wanted to give you guys kind of a heads up of why I pulled the DTA dedication for the Oak Street. After talking with Andrew with the CBDG, part of that was because of the requirements with CBDG, because we have to extend the project area. It means that for the little slice of seventeen and a half feet that we have to do, we have to, we have to complete an environmental evaluation on that. So it has to go through environmental for that. So when that is done, I will bring that back. Hopefully that doesn't cause an issue with the timing of the project because environmental can take up to ninety days. So we're hoping that we're able to make some phone calls and get it done sooner than the ninety days. Also, we had chip seal today. They started up on Burke Drive. They got, I think, I asked Derek, he said they got done with Cherry, so that means I'll be on Oak and Sixteenth tomorrow. So I'm excited about that. And then they'll be back in a couple weeks to do the, put the sealant on the top. I've had people call in and asking me if we can include their road. They've heard that we're doing chip seal. And then last, on July thirteenth, ODOT will be doing a presentation to the Mobility Advisory Committee on the Highway Ninety-seven Earl Colfax Project. And I was wondering if any of the council would like to sit through that presentation. I could, we can send it, I could send it to you and you could just watch it via Teams. You don't have to actually do it. But having you up to date on what they're doing would be nice if I can, July thirteenth.
What time?
Right now they haven't given me, they've got like a window from twelve to like three, but then they will narrow it down. So once they have it narrowed down, I can, I can send it to you.
Then I'd an email I can attend, most likely.
I can, I can just email it to everybody. And if you want to sit and watch it, you can sit and watch it. It's just, it's part of their project. It will kind of describe what they're doing throughout town, where they're adding sidewalk, where they're going to have pavement, where they're putting in, they're like the rapid flashing beacons and things like that. So it's kind of an overview of the project. And that's all I got.
Airport, Derek?
Yeah, thank you. We're mostly working on cleanup, cutting grass, cleaning up the FBO, moving some of the things that are around the hangars. So that's kind of what we've been working on. That's it.
Hey, Charo, Charo. We got a new chief.
I know, I was. I just want to first just thank council for your patience and your support over this last year. It has been just a little bit over a year since we first started being very concerned about our police department and the number of officers that we had and the direction of our entire department there. It has not been an easy road. It has been difficult for a number of us. And we, I can confidently say, have done it. And we are almost at full staff. And I am very proud to say that. And I know Tim is very proud, I know Christie is very proud. And I know all of our PD staff and all of our department heads are very proud about that. And I'm very happy to be able to tell you all that. So thank you for your patience and your support with that. It is, it has been fun. Yes, but we've accomplished a number of things along the way. And, and you'll get to see that, you'll get to see that. So that, that's really all.
Thank you. Christie?
I'll be as brief as Chief Plummer. First of all, just a report on behalf of Kelly on the contract management software. We did look into the record, the quote that we have on file is from twenty twenty-one. And so there's going to be a process that we need to go through to identify, you know, the software, what the current price is, and, and go through our purchasing guidelines on that. So just wanted to give you a heads up that she's working on that. And she has also sent out to you notification of League of Oregon Cities Training, the fundamentals training. So if there's any interest in counselor training, I know that you've mentioned it before, the League of Oregon Cities is a great resource and that fundamentals training is available. If you need any assistance with registration, let us know, but you should all have your individual logins that are assigned through the League of Oregon Cities. And we can make sure that we cover that through your training budget if that is something that you'd like to attend.
Is that the same training they give you when you first get in office?
Yes, every other year they do fundamentals and then the, I can't think of what the off here is. I think the fundamentals is the shorter version, which is what they're offering this year. Oh, the other year's it's elected essentials. So that may have been the one that you've, you've taken. There's, there's two different tracks. And the fundamentals is the shorter version of that, and that's what they're offering this year.
Thank you.
You should also have on your council calendars an invitation to attend a meeting that the county is convening with the governor's regional solutions representative for our region. That meeting is scheduled for June twenty-ninth. We hope that you can all attend. One of the things that we hope to talk with our new representative about is what Michelle brought up earlier, and that is can we get on a fast track with our environmental assessment process? And so we'll have the opportunity to meet our representative, but at that meeting, we'll ask for a special meeting to talk about that specific topic to see if that's something that we can encourage because we know that the governor is also supporting of the homeless shelters. And so we're hopeful that her staff will be able to move this request along to help our community. I want to congratulate Crystal and the entire finance team on the exceptional accounting work. It's very unusual not to receive any comments from an audit. And so I want to congratulate them for the fine accounting work that they're doing on an ongoing basis. I was talking to Crystal in a meeting and asking about, hey, how many adjusting journal entries did we have from the auditor? Well, maybe we, you know, there's, sometimes there's none. This year there was one. I've worked in cities where you have a half a million dollars in adjusting journal entries, so it's really a testament to the great work that they're doing, ensuring that the budgets are assigned in the appropriate places and the expenditures are reported there. So I just want to congratulate her and the entire team, the finance team, for the precise work that they're doing on an ongoing basis. That's really a testament to a great, a great process that they've put in place to ensure that there are no substantial changes. I'd also like to congratulate them on the successful year in realigning the budget, and that took a tremendous amount of work as well. And also to thank all of the staff whose budgets have been impacted by that change. We now have to go through the process of training staff on where they need to be assigning their expenditures into the new fiscal year. So it's going to be an ongoing effort. And I think in the end, it, the city is going to be better for it and our budget is going to be more transparent to the public and to all of you who may not look at a budget every day. And so I'm excited to see those changes. And I want to thank everyone for their involvement in that. I'd also like to thank Charo for her work with the consultant. I, I know that a lot of that, the language that was put in the position profile was information she sent to them, pictures that she had on file, and they're making that way into that advertisement for the city. So I want to thank her for that. Want to let you know that we're planning a summer barbecue and we have that with our staff and the council is certainly invited. You will see an invitation soon, but if you want to set time aside on your calendar, it's currently planned for July twenty-seventh, which is a Thursday. Before we conclude, I do want to talk about the schedule moving forward with the consultant. Charo and I met with the consulting firm yesterday, Steve from Prothman, another representative from Prothman. And it looks like for the schedule, we believe that the week of August twenty-first, we'll be able to bring forward to you the recommended candidates for the interview process. So they will have the list of candidates, they'll review those with you, and we would be, they'd be prepared sometime that week to make those recommendations, followed by, followed by anticipated interviews the week of September eleventh. So we'll get that schedule out to you in the future, but I kind of want to just give you a heads up that we have given some thought to how the process is going to move forward from here, so it's not stagnant. They do plan to put the brochure together and get that out the door and advertise beginning tomorrow. And so we will begin to receive applications soon and they plan to close those, the anticipated date is August sixth. And finally, the last thing I had to ask is I understand that during my absence, there was some discussion about whether or not we would convene during the summer months for two council meetings per month. And so I wanted to make sure that the council gives us some direction tonight on whether you would like to see those meetings moving forward.
Let me jump in there. I strongly think we should. Lot of exciting stuff happening for our city. Twelve months a year, I think we should do two months, two meetings every month. If we get in a situation where there's not enough to justify a meeting, we can always cancel, but I think we should book it that way. I think the taxpayers expect it, but I think we need to do that for the city, so I strongly support it.
I'll build off that. I think that we're at a point in growth in the city that there's more likely than not going to be enough to put on an agenda and not need to cancel a meeting. I also think that we as council shouldn't necessarily expect that every single counselor is here for every meeting. Like if you have vacations that you do in July, August, November, December, whatever, that's totally fine. You don't necessarily have to be here for every single meeting. We're all human, we all have lives. And that goes for staff as well. There shouldn't necessarily be that expectation outside of whatever the city administrator desires for it, because obviously she's your guys' boss, so. But I think, you know, we're all human. We all have lives and families and loved ones and things we like to go do, so.
I agree as well. We are in transition, we've been doing so many good things and we just have to finish the line. And so that's part of our commitment to, with everybody and to go forward. I do agree, even though we couldn't come to all of them.
I'm, I'm good with that, but what I would say is we've been pushing a lot of work sessions too, to go along with our city council meetings. And I think as we get more work done, we need to start looking at tailoring those work sessions down to one a month and then maybe further out depending on what our workload is. So yeah, summer's like my busiest time of year. And so you won't see me at every meeting.
So is that enough feedback for you, Christie, to go ahead and move forward with two a month?
Well, I think I've heard from three of, well, I guess I did hear from four of you, but.
Yeah, Councillor Holcomb.
Does anybody else want to weigh in?
Yeah, I think, I mean, as long as they're needed, meetings not just to adopt ordinances, that's what I would say, please. And no to two meetings in December. Not for a month out of the year. It's holidays.
Yeah, I'm fine, I'm fine to, with two meetings per month if we need it.
Okay, well, we will plan on those for July and August and we will likely have the July eleventh, eleventh meeting as well as a work session on July tenth, if Michelle's able to get her guest speaker lined up from ODOT with an update on the Highway Ninety-seven project and IGA.
Will that be in our council meeting or in the work session?
Work session.
I would almost lean towards moving that to council, simply to give us time to be able to hear his presentation and then ask questions and have discussion. Because if we spend thirty, forty minutes of their presentation, then we only have like fifteen, twenty minutes for some of us to ask questions before we have to run. So I would look, the way I look at the work sessions is more for staff to bring something and for us as council to have that discussion, not necessarily for somebody from the outside to come and present something to us. I think that should remain in city council.
And I, I'll let Michelle comment on that because from what I understood, Michelle, you say this morning is that you are looking for feedback from the council to finalize that document.
Yeah, I have an IGA and I've asked ODOT to be present to answer questions, not to give you a presentation.
Okay, so we'll be, you'll have something for us.
Yes, I have an IGA.
We'll review, discuss, they're not presenting, but available for us if we ask questions.
Yeah, because with the IGA, there's a lot of language in there about right away and this and that, and I can't answer it all, so, but ODOT can. It's their IGA.
Okay.
And they're wanting it to get executed and I think the best way is to bring it to you, let you see it, let them answer your questions. And if there's anything, it's been in legal back and forth. And by then it should be about ready to be adopted and I would really like you to get eyes on it before I bring it to you.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
May I make a, a comment to Crystal? You mentioned about Kelly and all the documents for the contracts. I don't know if someone looked at the Excel spreadsheet that she sent. What I did do, I did open it, I put it in ascending order trying to get sense of it. I just must say, it's really amiss and it's nothing. I mean, it's three hundred lines and only of those fifteen have an expiration date and then many don't even have an explanation what they are. And one is even overdue, like eight months. So we really need that software and give it a priority. I mean, we have nothing and that's just part of the contracts for what I hear, so.
I, I would agree on that, that I think the, I'm glad Kelly is looking in with that and you're looking into that. And I think that it's mission critical, almost whatever the software costs, I'm sure it's somewhat reasonable. I think we need to just do it as expeditiously as possible because I think we need that software so we can get our house in order logistically.
From what I understand, the, the quote in twenty twenty-one was just under twenty-five thousand dollars.
Christie, was there anything else?
Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Jeremy, are you awake?
I'm awake, I'm here, I have nothing to report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Totally. Councillor Holcomb? Are you awake?
I just want to thank everybody. It was a rough meeting, appreciate all the efforts, finance, budget, everybody. Nick, I'm going to give this laptop back to you. Right now it's paperweight, so I was, I didn't throw it, but I'm giving it back.
Councillor Sebel?
Want to thank everybody for all their hard work. This was a little bit of a stressful meeting, obviously, and we've got important things for the city, so I think everybody's doing a really good job. Appreciate everybody and yeah, let's, let's keep going. Love it. I think we're doing a good job. I, I believe in what we're doing here and I think we got good people, so let's, let's keep on trucking on.
Councillor Solis?
I think that was the shortest report Sebel's ever given. I'm impressed.
Agreed.
I forgot to.
Like to thank council, like our previous two counselors have mentioned, it's, it has been a rough, long evening. There's a lot on the agenda, a lot of passion, questions in the room, both from council and also from the public. Those from the public that are still here, appreciate you guys sticking around and seeing how things work and operate and for putting up with everything that we discuss and make decisions for, it's for the community as a whole. Also like to thank our department directors, all the hard work you guys put in, along with sticking around this late when we go this late, so appreciate that. late, when we go this late, so appreciate that, um, I'm gonna jump in on Christie's comment regarding finance, only having one adjusting journal entry from auditors, working in government finance myself, that's frickin' impressive, that's amazing, so, kudos to you and your staff, that's great, um, I have nothing to report, let's all go home and go to sleep, wake up refreshed for a new day.
Thank you. Council Yoder.
Um, I too, wanna kinda echo what's been said already, but I appreciate all the hard work that's been done with all the staff here, and I also appreciate the fact that, um, we had quite a few community members here voicing their opinions, sometimes we don't always get that, and it's nice when they can come here and share, or even talk to us counselors, and share with us counselors, because that's what we're, we're here to, to help support our community, and if we don't get any feedback, then we don't know what we're supposed to do, right? Anyways, um, also wanted to report a little bit on the airport, Derek kinda touched on some of these things, but, uh, we talked about some roofing repairs that need to be done at the hangars, um, up there, also Derek discussed, um, working with legal and getting together a standard leasing policy, um, for, uh, up there at the airport, um, and Derek also talked about doing some T-hanger exploration, uh, being able to build some new T-hangers, and see if we can create some additional revenue for the airport, um, there was also some damage done to taxiway lights, that those get expensive, and that was discussed, I guess people ran over some lights up there, and then, uh, something else that was, uh, mentioned also was a, uh, Halloween having some type of, uh, trunk-or-treat, if you can call it that, at the airport, so, um, it sounds like that would create a little more, um, interest, families up there, they do it at the, at the, uh, speed, Speedway also, so, somebody talked about trying to make sure that the times don't overlap with the Speedway in the city, um, with the airport up there, so, anyways, that's all I have to report.
Council Spencer.
I'll echo what everybody has said, thank you for all the hard work, I also hope that you can see results from what you're doing, and seeing that the council is committed, and because it does also give, uh, a lot of strength to give the hours, and being behind scenes also, um, doing a lot, so it's a team effort, and the ones that are benefiting will be the city, so, thank you for everything.
Council Walker.
If I don't fall asleep first, I'll try and get this finished. [laughing] It's past my bedtime, congratulations, thank you, Tim, and thank the rest of the staff for everything they're doing, Michelle, I know you've got a lot on your shoulders as well, and, all you guys are working hard, we appreciate that, uh, again, I, I echo the others else, and, and, uh, Council Yoder, I, I echo his, uh, response to the, uh, public's response, like he said, we don't often get to hear all of that, so it helps us make an informed decision, um, you know, we don't always like what, what happens, but, uh, moving forward, I think we have, um, something to work with, the govern, the state required it, so we had to do something, so, I'm just, uh, glad that we can keep an eye on it and change it as we need to, so, thank you, counselors, and, uh, mayor, and all staff.
Thank you, thank you, counselors, this is quite an evening, um, by far, the, probably the most stressful and lengthy council meeting that I've experienced here, I wanna, you know, I wanna thank Fatma, she sits over there very quiet, and she sees a lot of things get done, and I, I, I'm grateful that I actually got an opportunity to get to know her a little bit at a CPR first aid class here, and, uh, just want you all to know that she's really good at doing chest compressions, if you guys drop out here, she's gonna save your life, she does good work, so, thank you, Fatma, for the work you do here, that, uh, you do so quietly, I'm not sure if people notice that, you're the one that keeps everything glued together, um, directors, this has been really, uh, crazy past few months here, it's been longer, but it's, I, I'm sure you've all felt the stress on things going on with the craziness with the FBO, and whatnot's going on at Public Works, and the loss of, of Mike and his move, and things going on with Bring It On Town, um, the stress of putting our audit and budget together, and the team worked at you guys is, was just phenomenal, um, I want you all to know, I had to go to the county one time to, uh, answer to Jeff, no, I shouldn't say answer, I had to answer some questions about stuff, and I brought Crystal along as my heavy, because I knew she can answer any questions that was thrown at us, and she did a wonderful job, um, the work you do here is appreciated, it truly is, now, I need to switch this before people throw me out or get quiet, but, I got a, an email from a constituent asking about, this is really a squirreling here, asking about our, uh, animal ordinance kinda deal, he wanted to, I thought he said goat for his kids to do F, uh, FFA stuff, but he lives in the city, and then, I'm like, I'm like, no, that's nuisance, you can't do that there, noise either, whatever, and our ordinance says you can't have goats, but what he was asking for is a miniature goat.
You can have goats in the city, but they're, they're for, they're for each target.
Really?
Right.
No, no, you can also can't have bees, or roosters, and I don't care about roosters, but I like bees, yeah, roosters, I don't care, they can go away, but, anyway, he shared with me, uh, the ordinances that they have in Portland, and I printed them off just the, the meat of it for y'all, but I left it at home, so, I'm gonna throw it in your boxes for food for thought, and look at it, it's entertaining, there's also the website on there, so you can look it up, but, I'd actually like, if you don't mind, I'd like to address it, and kinda, it'd be kinda interesting, but, just fit for that, um, with that being said, go home, get some rest, thank you, we're adjourned the meeting at nine forty-three. That's a wrap.
Recording stopped.